Go ahead, Al.
Good evening, all. Al Diorio here. Looks like we have 7:00. I'd like to call this evening's meeting to order. And our first item on the agenda is approval of the minutes August 5th, 2020, please.
Keith Lindelof here. I'll make a motion to approve as written.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Very good, thank you. I have a motion. I have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Diorio?
Rowland, yes. Rowland, yes. Keith Lindelof.
Shamsini, yeah.
Okay, very good, thank you. So, prior to moving into the next item, which is a public hearing...
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is Jim Lamphier, Town Planner. I had a request from the applicant for Frontier Road Project from Revody. At the last meeting, I'm sure you recall that they wanted to be first on this agenda, to pick up where they last left off. And, you know, as you know, that's going to be a decision of the Planning Board. Normally, we have public hearings first, and we do have a public hearing scheduled tonight. But I would ask if anyone from Revody is here to explain to the board why you want to go first on the agenda, exactly what your need is, and then after that, the Board can vote to switch the order of the agenda if they so choose.
So, per usual, members of the Revody team, please press star nine.
Representatives for Revody...
Yeah, hi, Chairman Deere. This is Ralph Plumbel. Can you hear me?
Yes, Ron.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Karen, are you on? Karen Brownie? Guess not.
I'm here. I just got unmuted. Yep, I'm here.
Okay, thank you. Karen, I'll let you respond to Mr. Lamphier's question.
Sure. I think, I wasn't there at the last hearing. My understanding, based on review of the transcript, was that we had hoped to certainly move this matter towards a vote, and that we had very limited information to present tonight. And given, you know, the numerous meetings we had, we were looking forward to, you know, getting this done.
Thank you for the response. However, it doesn't speak to why you're forwarding a request to be moved up on the agenda. Customarily, we take our public hearings first. So, do you have some extenuating circumstance that you'd like to present to the Board?
So, Chairman Deere, this is Ralph Plumbel. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I get it. You know, we're here, we've worked closely with the Planning Board. I know you guys have worked very, very hard on this, and we've extended on numerous occasions at the request of the Planning Board. And that's really why we're asking for to be here at first, so we don't run out of time again, Mr. Deere. And there's a balance in everything, and I do, you know, respect that there are other items on the agenda, and I do respect that your Board has been very helpful. But I think it's either three or four extensions we've made, Mr. Deere, and that's why we're asking for this.
Okay, good enough. So, Planning Board members, you're in the audience, you're hearing this as well as I am. Please give me your thoughts. Whether we need to revise... Any Board members?
Okay, I'll always go back to keyboard. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Ron.
After listening to Mr. Plumbel, I don't understand where there's a reason to upset our normal order of having public hearings first.
Okay.
So, I would say we do the public hearing and then get on with the rest of our lives.
Understood. Other Planning Board members, please weigh in.
This is Emily. I agree. Agenda as written.
Keith here. I speak her.
Carolyn?
Anybody else care to weigh in? Otherwise, we already have a consensus. Okay, deal's done. We're going to hold the agenda the way it is right now. We're burning daylight. I don't want to spend too much time on this. So, we move to the first item on the agenda, which is a public hearing. For this topic, I'm going to be submitting a notice of recusal. This applicant has been a client of mine in the past. I have no association with this project, but at the direction of the Ethics Commission, out of an abundance of caution, I am going to recuse. I'm handing a notice of recusal to the clerk, and I would respectfully request that Ron take the helm at this time.
Thank you.
Understood.
The record of recusal. Please proceed, Ron.
Okay, thank you. The actual protocol to this is not familiar to me. I guess we need to ask for a motion to open the public hearing. And any advice that I could get on this from our planner? That would be helpful. Thank you.
Yes, I think that would be the first step, Ron, is to open the public hearing. But before we do so, I just want to mention that there's three items on this agenda tonight that any one of which could consume the entire evening. So, I would just suggest that the Planning Board members keep in mind, as a guideline, giving one hour roughly to each one of these, a lot, one hour for each one of these three items, and try to get our business conducted within that timeframe. And then we can, there's a fourth item as well that Carolyn brought to the attention of the Board, which we may have to give an extension of time for at the end. But we have a lot of, I just, you know, I just request of every, for the Board members and everyone in the public to try and make your thoughts as succinct as possible, so that we can get through what we need to do and conduct our business tonight. So, that's my advice, Ron.
Thank you, Jim. So, do we have a motion to open the meeting? Or the hearing, I'm sorry. Open the hearing.
Keith Lindelof here. I'll make a motion to open a public hearing.
Thank you, Keith. We have a second.
Sure, I'll second. This is Emily.
Thank you, Emily. Okay, Planning Board members and residents of Hopkinton, thank you for joining in. We're going to have a little discussion here, discussion time. The people from Centrica, are you here?
Some of them are. If you are going to be presenting during this period, please press star nine.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, this is Sean Clough, Town Solicitor. Just wanted to clarify, you asked for a motion, a motion and second was made. Are you going to be calling for a vote to open the public hearing?
I apologize. That's an overstep on my part. Yes, could we have a vote from the Planning Board members, please? Rowland, yes.
Keith Lindelof, yes.
Chair, yeah.
Okay, we have three out of three, so I guess we're in business here. I have a question first for the Town Planner. For over 60 years, that was an operating business on that property as an auto sales and secondhand parts/junkyard. When was it changed to an RFR-80? Or does it automatically go to that? Or how did that happen? Can I direct my question probably to Mr.?
Yeah, Jim Lamphier, Town Planner. I don't know the history on when that property was zoned RFR-80, but I know that all of the uses on that property are legal non-conforming uses. So, at some point, at some point, the uses preceded the zoning of RFR-80. So, maybe the applicant's attorney, I don't know who's representing this application here tonight, but I wish, if Joel Roca is here to represent, I think, I think these types of questions should be directed to the applicant, who should know the property in very great detail.
Okay, thank you, Jim. I redirect my question to the attorneys.
Jim Lamphier, Town Planner. Is anybody here to represent this application?
I've asked them to unmute multiple occasions. To do that, you press star six. Joel. Go ahead.
Sorry about that. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Good evening. Joel Rocha, attorney for the applicant tonight. I usually would do an introduction, but I do want to address the chair's question right away. We have the owner of the property. I'm not familiar exactly when the ordinance did change. I would echo the Town Planner's comments in that they're all non-conforming on this. Well, the one site we're talking about, which is its own property, is legal non-conforming as well as the other adjacent properties part of this land condominium unit. I'm not sure if Mr. Camoli can weigh in on the history of the zoning on this, and then we'll kind of get back to our presentation if he can.
Okay, I'd like to request a, excuse me, I'd like to request a little clarification on the non-conforming. Is it non-conforming to the residential area? Or is it non-conforming to the fact that it was an automotive business for over 60 years?
It's non, sorry, go ahead. The planner or...
George Camoli here. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Attorney George Camoli. I am one of the principals of Camoli Granite Company, Inc. It is non-conforming in two ways. Number one, there is a quarry that is in existence and has been existed prior, probably early 1900s. And then there's Perry's salvage yard that was there and operated for over 50 years. And approximately seven years ago, Mr. Grills purchased it. Portions of the salvage yard in the front still exist.
So, I think, and the question was, is it non-conforming? And I'm going to try to answer it as best as I understand it, so, Mr. Chair, please feel free to jump in. But the, it's non-conforming because none of those uses are allowed in the RFR-80 zone. That, I don't know, hopefully that answers your question.
Okay, as I'm understanding your answer, Perry Motors was there illegally for the time that they were there. They did not conform to the zoning?
No, I cannot answer that question, because I don't know when, oh, go ahead.
They were there prior to zoning.
Yes.
You didn't have a zoning ordinance when Perry's opened. You can't say they were illegal, because they opened a junkyard and there was no zoning that would prohibit it, so they were operating as a legal, non-conforming use, once you passed the zoning laws.
Okay, that's still a little bit of a gray area in my mind. I apologize if I'm not up to the speed on the laws, but it would change me if they're operating as a business.
Mr. Chairman, if you have a gas station that was put there in 1940, and it's in the middle of a residential neighborhood, and it all wants you pass zoning laws, you can't say it's an illegal use, because it's there, it's in existence, and it was there prior to zoning, so it's considered a legal, non-conforming use.
Okay, understood. It was just a gray area in my mind that it was used as a business for all those years, and then now it's RFR-80. I was just curious how it became zoned as RFR-80. Okay, moving on.
Thank you. So, and I hear the message loud and clear about the timing on these presentations, and I don't intend to have our presentation go very long. This Planning Board, along with the town, has considered a vast amount of solar projects over the last several years, and I think, I think you all have an understanding of what's involved with these type of projects. I will say that, you know, we're, this is plot two, lot 73, unit two. As we discussed, the zone RFR-80, it is approximately 39 acres. We're here for a comprehensive plan amendment for the future land use map, as well as a zoning map change to bring the property to commercial special. Here, this, this application before you is unique in that it is a legal, non-conforming use as a junkyard and as a gravel pit. So, your ordinance, along with a lot of communities, this is usually the preferred reuse for those type of sites, along with landfills, and your ordinance had the foresight to build into it the language in paragraph 13 of chapter 246, which says, "The town of Hopkinton encourages PSES on formal, former gravel banks, brownfields, and landfills. Such locations shall be consistent with the Hopkinton Comprehensive Plan and shall strive to minimize the visual impacts of these systems from streets and neighboring properties." As you all know, the main question on a zone change, and potentially the only question, is consistency with the comprehensive plan. I think your ordinance built that in, so I won't, I won't belabor that point. I think it's clear in that ordinance and the comprehensive plan that this is a unique situation, and that while the underlying zoning is residential, the uses on the site are now and have historically been these types of non-conforming uses. So, with that, we're going to focus this presentation on discussing a little bit more about the uses, the current uses at the site, and focus on the visual impacts of these systems from the streets and neighboring properties, which is the target of the town's ordinance. We have, as you know, Mr. Camoli here to discuss the property itself, and then we have our project engineer to provide just a general overview of the design of the site. You have the site plan in front of you, along with his narrative. We also provided, which is also up for public viewing on the town's website, a drone footage showing the site itself, the clearing, the gravel bank, which a large portion of this array will be located in both those areas. So, with that being said, I'm going to turn it over back to Mr. Camoli to mention a little bit more about the property, and then we'll hear from Jason Gold, our project engineer.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I may proceed, I want to thank everyone on the Planning Board for taking the time. George A. Camoli, I am one of the principals of Camoli Granite Company, Inc. We're the owners of this 39-acre property, former home of Perry's salvage yard, a portion of which exists in the front, a large steel building, weigh station, and there is heavy equipment there currently. There also exists there a quarry operation where we continue to take minor amounts of jetty stone, curb stone, and stair stones. That quarry dates back to the 1900s, and is one of the reasons you have a road that runs over to the Pollicoon Bridge. The reason that we have not aggressively mined this particular site are threefold. First, Chase Hill Road is not conducive to heavy equipment or heavy traffic. If you drove down there, everyone could understand that. Secondly, the stone that is at the quarry is neither Westerly Blue White, which is famous throughout the world, or Westerly Pink, which is perfect monument stone. The stone there is mostly wallstone, curbstone, and jetty stone. Jetty stone is referred to as armor stone. It's stone that you would see in the jetties down in Weeke Park, and it's becoming more and more in demand as our economy is struggling to recreate its infrastructure. The third reason is, this particular site, though there is a quarry, the previous Perry's salvage yard, if everyone took a chance to look at that particular footage, you can see that there's a field there that nothing grows on. You will never see a residential home there. You will never see an agricultural use. It just won't grow, nor will it be allowed. We're suggesting that pursuant to your comprehensive plan, the best and highest use of this property would be for a solar facility and the abandonment of those uses that are existing there now. I believe that there are some opponents who may suggest differently, but if you look at the footage and you talk to the neighbors who are not in opposition to this project, you cannot see this proposed solar system unless you took a five-minute hike. You could not locate this solar system unless you had a drone. Thirdly, and most importantly, there is no traffic that will be generated down Chase Hill Road, which is a residential road. The property in the front is owned by Michael Grills, who I salute. If you ever had the opportunity, you see the beautiful walls he has constructed there, and if you had the opportunity, you'd be able to drive behind his home and see the beautiful trails he's built, as well as the trails towards the river. I believe these are all assets, and the proposed use will only generate an asset as well. It'll address many of the concerns of our environment, many of the concerns of our economic system, and most importantly, your comprehensive plan. I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Camoli. I've personally been into that part of the property for the past 55, 60 years, and I agree, it's all downhill from the road. And I don't mean that in a flippant manner. Geographically, it's downhill, and it would be completely out of sight. Do you have anyone else? Do we have anyone else on the Planning Board that has any questions for Mr. Camoli?
Not at this time for me.
This is Emily. I have questions.
Sure, go ahead, Emily.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
You know, I understand the applicant's desire to frame this as, you know, in the town's best interest. I have some questions, though, about the application that make me a little bit worried about that proposition. One is, can you provide some insight as to why the zone change application cites the 2010 Hopkinton Comprehensive Plan and not the current 2016 version?
I'll defer to the attorney on that one.
I am looking for that citation. Yes, I see that now. Obviously, that's a typo. I'm not sure if it's a typo with the, I don't have your whole comprehensive plan in front of me right now, so I don't know if it's a typo just as to the year for that. But what I can tell you is, you know, you're, and I don't want to go down the road, you've heard a million times, but I'm sure you're abundantly familiar with the current comprehensive plan and the renewable energy section. So, and it's really, it's really two pages, page 43 and 44, and the focus is on trying to come up with creative solutions on allowing solar in residential zones. And I think there have been such projects approved, but I would go back to the idea that this is, it's not a residential use. Like Mr. Camoli said, it's not suited for a residential use, and it's really targeted at what's the best adaptive reuse of this property short of what it's currently zoned for under the residential use, since that's not a realistic use of the property, given its current and past uses. So, that, I think, despite the typo, I do think that if you look at the current 2016 Comprehensive Plan, the focus on allowing for renewable energy and its goals, I believe it is, it is consistent with the actual comprehensive plan, and I apologize for that typo in the application.
Okay. Can you provide some explanation about the setbacks chosen for this and their consistency with our ordinances about, our provisions about abutting residential land? So, when we have a zone change from commercial, I'm sorry, when we have a request to change a zone from residential to commercial, we've had multiple discussions about, in multiple projects, about the appropriate setbacks for those particular boundaries. Can you explain the ones in your plan?
Sure, absolutely. So, I have our project engineer on for that. I can have him talk about that now if he would like, or in his presentation. I understand your ordinance and the need for, actually, you know, we exceed the ordinance, but I will have him go through what the exact measurements are, because it's, at a point, I would like to emphasize as to the distance this is to abutting residential properties.
Okay. Before we go down... Jason, are you on? Oh, sorry. Jason, right? Before we go to the presentation?
Yeah, do you want me to hold? Okay.
Yeah, just one more quick question about, about an abutting property. So, the Hopkinton Land Trust owns one of the parcels to the southeast. Probably less than 500 feet from the panels in the sort of southern portion of the property is the Pawtucket River, and the Grills Wildlife Preserve and Sanctuary is, I would say, you know, I did a quick measurement in GIS, it's definitely less than 500 feet from the panel. So, I'm just curious, you know, if you have some comment about the placement of panels so close to a wildlife preserve, so close to the Pollicoon Bridge, which is actually covered by a label in your plan? But, you know, this is, it's, the abutting property is not only, you know, very close to the Hopkinton Land Trust area, the, right across the river is Westerly Land Trust-owned property and their portion of the Grills Preserve. And I noticed that in your list of abutters, you included, you know, a 200-foot buffer. If the buffer is increased, you know, just to 500 feet, you start getting into, you know, some pretty significant sets of interest in terms of the Hopkinton Land Trust and probably some other Westerly properties. And so, because it's so proximal to the town border, I would request, first of all, that the list of abutters is expanded to include Westerly Land Trust, to make sure they know about panels being this close to one of their assets, and at minimum, include the Westerly Land Trust. So, your thoughts on that?
Emily, can I...
Sure. Oh, go ahead.
Emily, I'm a mountain biker. I'm out there every week, and I know just what you're talking about. The Pollicoon Bridge is, if you went, it goes slopes downhill, and between the Pollicoon Bridge and our property is the existing quarry. If we continued to quarry it, we would be solely heading in that direction. Immediately going towards the Pawtucket River is the other lot owned by Michael Grills, who made some spectacular trails in there. who made some spectacular trails in there. If you care, the mountains are pretty nice. They go right down to the river. Uh, I, I would suggest the applicant has no problem giving notice to everyone within a thousand feet. There's no one around us. If you look at that footage, there's no residential home. There's, there's just nobody. I mean, the, and we thought it was the highest and best use rather than continue to quarry the site. That's my only comment.
And, and as far as impact with respect to that question, I think Jason will talk about that, and I'll probably jump in as well in his presentation.
Mr. Chairman, Jim Lamphier, Town Planner, if I can just interject one second here. Um, again, in the interest of time, um, I just want to remind the planning board that the, the issue before you right now is, do you want to change the future land use map of the Comprehensive Plan in a manner that changes the character of that area? I, I would, I would be a little hesitant to get too deep into the site plan details here because, as Emily just pointed out, the applicant has put a 25-foot side yard setback on here. Um, the planning board, as you know, we've, we've done many projects like this. The planning board can set a 100-foot setback, okay? So, um, I just want to be careful that when the applicant goes, goes forth and puts forth plans like this to the planning board, and then they're going to carry this same thing to the town council, which they've already given the council, okay? 25-foot setback is not necessarily going to hold here. The planning board has the power to kick this back 100 feet from a residential zone. So that, that's one aspect of a site plan that I really wish you folks would not get too concerned about at this point. The issue is, do you want to change the zoning on this parcel to accommodate a solar array? Is this, the things you should be thinking about is, is this particular parcel suitable for this type of a solar array to be put on it? Is, is it going to be harmful in general to the, to the area around it? Is, is this a suitable parcel or not? Without getting too deep into access roads, uh, interconnection things of that nature. And again, I say that in the interest of conserving time here so that we can really get to the, to the heart of the matter, which has given the council an advisory opinion on the two requests that are being put to you tonight. So with that, I'll, I'll rest.
Thank you. This is Emily, this is Emily again, Ron, just, I could just do a quick follow-up on that. Um, totally understand, I, I, you know, the applicant is asking the planning board to waive the requirements in the solar ordinance for a zone change from residential to commercial of coverage maximum of 3% or three acres for this project because of its unique features. So merely trying to dig into what some of those unique features are, both on the positive and negative side for this neighborhood. Because this project, we were being asked to make an exception for these unique features could set a precedent for any future project where a residential parcel is requesting a zone change to commercial, much like this one is, and is going to list out all the reasons why it's a good idea for that particular piece of land. And we just have to be really careful in examining these types of applications because of their ability to set a precedent that other people will immediately go out and follow. And we should just be very, we have been, and we continue to be very careful about these changes of an isolated parcel in the middle of a residential neighborhood to commercial use. Completely understand all the history of this particular parcel and the land use on it. And so I think it's just really important that we think about what's going on here and, and actually not proceed too quickly. Um, I understand we have, you know, lots going on, but each one of these needs to be very carefully considered. That's all. Thanks, Ron. I'm done.
Okay, thank you, Emily. Now, we have another one, another person from the presenter that has things that they want to say?
Uh, yes, this is Jason Gold. I'm a professional engineer with ESS Group. And I can, uh, take it through the proposed project. Again, as, uh, as Jim mentioned, I'll, I'll keep it brief and stick to the high points. Uh, before I do, I'll, I just want to, um, address one of the comments regarding the, the notice in Westerly. Um, the radius map that we had submitted was 200 feet from the condo unit. Um, we've since been asked to change that to 200 feet from the property line. So that, that's pending, and that does extend over into the, uh, Westerly Land Trust. So they will be notified. I just wanted to point that out. All right, so, uh, since we can't, uh, display these video, um, I'm sorry, the presentation, uh, they've been posted online. There's a couple of links on the website, instructions to them are on the agenda. I'm just going to refer to the one titled Kamali Solar Planning Board Presentation 2020-08-05. And that is, um, just some select figures taken from the complete application that's been submitted, just to keep this, uh, keep this simple. Um, so we already talked about the existing conditions. The only thing I'll add are the wetlands that are shown on the plans. Uh, those are delineated in June 2019. Uh, the site's not within a natural heritage area. It is within a groundwater primary protection zone. Uh, so the conceptual project, uh, you can see these on the first page. Uh, Plan C1 is the, um, more detailed concept. The second page, P1, is a little bit easier to, uh, read for presentation. Uh, so it's an approximately 3.4 megawatt DC array that's being proposed. Uh, the photovoltaic solar energy system occupies approximately 7.8 acres, and it's surrounded by a approximately 9.48-acre fence that includes, um, the array and a couple of detention basins as well. Uh, that also includes the equipment pad. And, uh, also proposed is the access road and approximately nine utility poles. As usual, uh, the air inside the fence will be grass, shade trees. Uh, outside the fence will be shaded but not, um, I'm sorry, shade trees will be cut but not grubbed. The array set, uh, pretty far back, as, as George had mentioned, it's about 989 feet back from Chase Hill Road horizontally, vertically. It's about a 30 to 82-foot, uh, difference lower than that, um, entrance at Chase Hill Road. It's over 600 feet from the nearest residence, and it's surrounded by, surrounded by woods. So visually, uh, we're trying to find, you know, the, the worst case where you could, if there was any chance of seeing this, uh, really would be down the driveway, uh, where there's no woods, since the site is, um, so wooded and, and surrounded by woods. So, uh, if you look on P2, which is the last page, we did a sightline profile looking from Chase Hill Road, uh, down the driveway, um, trying to find an alignment, um, with the minimal trees. And it's actually kind of tough to find a, to find a way to look down the driveway without being obstructed by existing buildings on Unit 1, without being obstructed by trees. So there's this one narrow path that you can see at the top of P2. In the center of that sheet, you'll see the sightline profile. And you can see the, the little dash on the left-hand side is the sightline. And that shows that if you were to stand on Chase Hill Road and try to look down the driveway to see the site, uh, the project, the topography of the project area drops, drops below the sightline, and the site is actually obstructed by the existing topography. So you can see that it raises up and then drops back down. So just even forgetting the woods, just topographically, uh, you won't be able to see this from Chase Hill Road. And then the bottom of the page, uh, that's just a, um, Google Street View to give you a sense of what it would look like, um, looking through that driveway. Uh, the project will be designed in accordance with the solar ordinance. All the distribution lines will be underground. Uh, the yard setbacks will be met. And again, uh, by ordinance, uh, commercial setbacks are 60-foot front, 25-foot side, 50-foot rear. Um, and again, we're showing, you know, on the west side, 280 feet, 500 feet on the north side, and even more than that on the, on the south side. The east, the east side, uh, we do have the 25-foot setback. And again, that side is, um, furthest away from anything. So this site is, uh, you know, we located this to be where there'd be the least clearing, uh, required because that area's all grass already, and, uh, topographically, and, um, difficult to see. Uh, the project will be surrounded by a seven-foot-high chain-link fence, uh, locked with a Knox box for emergency access. And the bottom of that fence is raised six inches above the ground. No exterior lighting is proposed. The panel heights will not exceed 12 feet above final grade. Uh, the stormwater controls will be designed in accordance with the Rhode Island Stormwater Design Installation Manual and the Hopkinson Land Development Subdivision Regulations. And you can see on this plan, we're showing two detention basins. They're pretty small. Uh, that's all that we expect that we'll need based on the, uh, the topography and existing conditions. Future work that will be done if this project progresses will be, uh, will advance the permit level design. Uh, this is a noise study that will show that you, uh, won't exceed 40 decibels at the property line. And of course, the stormwater report and the solar incentive control plan and the decommission plan. So that is the, um, the brief overview of, of what we're proposing out there and the, the site layout. I'm happy to take any, uh, technical questions.
Okay, thank you. Planning board members, any questions? Comments? Hearing none, I guess we can move on to the, uh, public comment portion of this.
Mr. Chair, if I just have?
Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, if I just have?
If anybody could speak one person at a time, it would surely be helpful. Go ahead, Emily.
It wasn't me.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Chair, Joel Rocha for the applicant.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, just, just briefly, um, as to the, um, location near the land trust and, um, and without going too far down a road, um, I, I do want to attempt to address the issue, and I understand the 3% issue. I, um, I will say that this, as I understand the ordinance, the ability to go beyond that is, is limited to these types of sites, the gravel banks, uh, landfills, and so on. I think that flexibility is in there for a couple of reasons, and that's because some of these current uses, like a quarry, are, um, more valuable, um, than a, a very small solar, or 3% or three-acre solar array. So in giving up those non-conforming uses, which the town really wants to get rid of, um, as do most towns, um, there has to be this type of balance. Um, I do think that even though it's near a wildlife preserve and, you know, hopefully we get approved and we're back before you to discuss the, the intimate details of this and, um, DEM or any other reviews that are required that also look at this. But, um, is it probably the least intrusive use you can propose with those surrounding, um, land trusts and, and types of, types of, um, properties? So, um, that was all I wanted to add with respect to that point.
Okay, thank you. Do we have anyone in the audience that has a question or a comment?
Uh, we have a couple of people. I am going to either state your name or the last four digits of your phone number, uh, and then you'll be allowed to speak. Go ahead, Mr. Bibler.
Okay, thank you, Claudia.
I'm sorry, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. I, it's Eric Bibler. I have a number of concerns. I just want to list them quickly, and then I think the planning board can, um, uh, hear them and the applicant can address them. Uh, first of all, with respect to the idea of, uh, pre-existing non-conforming use. Um, if, if there's a pre-existing non-conforming use, the only right that pertains to that is to write, is the right to continue the same use. Um, I don't think that, um, DEM would look kindly on, uh, continued use of, um, of the property as an unregulated salvage yard. So I don't think that's going to happen. Um, as far as the quarry, uh, Mr. Kamali said that the, the Kamalis are still quarrying, um, material there. I think the issue there in terms of whether solar constitutes a more attractive use than existing use is whether or not the existing quarrying activity is actually obnoxious or not. Um, obviously, there was quite a lot of controversy over some quarrying operations over the past few years in Westerly, which, uh, caused quite a bit of disruption to the neighbors. But if this use is being pursued and it's not, uh, disrupting the lives of the neighbors, then it isn't anything obnoxious that is advantageous to, uh, for us to, uh, have cease. So that's one thing. Secondly, um, I'm not sure who mentioned it, but the, there was an issue mentioned about the notices and whether or not it was the correct radius or whether or not every interested party was actually provided with a notice. And then, I'm not sure who said it, but someone on behalf of the applicant said that there was a request to notice additional parties and that you're in the process of doing that. Well, I would argue that this is a public hearing, and I think you have a defective notice if you haven't, if you have not provided, um, notice to every party that might take an interest in this hearing. You can't just approve, or you can't issue a recommendation on this without having invited to this hearing the opportu, you know, all the people that, um, legally should be allowed to be here. So if, if that's defective, I would respectfully say that you can't decide this tonight. You're going to have to continue it until you can notice those people. Um, third, I, there are some, um, aspects of this plan which I find very concerning. Um, one of them is, um, I know that the town planner, Mr. Lamphier, said he didn't want to get stuck on this, but I think it's worth mentioning that, um, these setbacks are completely insufficient. Um, we've got multiple, um, abutters here. Uh, the, the Palmers, the Wrights, the Coles, and the Land Trust, just to name a few. I don't think that's all of them. Where the paneled area is going to come right up to within about 25 feet of their properties. Now, I know that this array might be many more feet distant from their homes, but developers, we can't fall into this. Developers cannot get credit for the buffer that exists on the abutters property. That property owner has the right to have a buffer to his property line. We don't know what future owners might want to do with these properties, and they should have a full 100-foot buffer between their residential property and their arrays. So let's not get into the habit of measuring distances to existing residences, and I, those really have to be 100 feet. Finally, I think I want to echo, um, planning board member Emily Schmpchania's concerns about setting precedents. You know, there are aspects of this, um, mixed use. This is a mixed-use plan here or kind of a split zone, although it's a little odd because it has condominium units on it. Um, if you look at this plan, the road, the access road, which is part of the commercial plan here, and the poles and the interconnection run across Unit 1 of this condominium. So this project is not confined to Unit 2. It also traverses Unit 1, and some of the prime components, including these very tall poles and wires, are on Unit 1. And there is a boundary between Unit 1 and the Palmer family on, on Platte 2, Lot 72, um, where these poles are going to be, looks like maybe at most 50 feet from their lot line. So they're going to have this industrial structure pretty close to their lot line and also visible from the road. Um, you're not going to go underground with the wires to the roads. So when you drive by, you know, that's you know, that's what you're going to see. But the other issue that this raises is I don't know what existing buildings are on unit one. There was a reference to existing buildings, but the plan here is to allow it to remain as RFR 80, which is a residential zone and put this commercial road and poles on top of it. Now, we already saw this with a proposal for the project on Woodville Road for Carapessa. We've seen this with the other project on Chase Hill Road for Shirensia. And we've seen this idea on Crandall Lane for a split zone where the, you know, you'd have, you'd have a road on a, on a residential property or, you know, nearby. So that's a precedent that I don't think we want to see where we say it's okay for part of the commercial installation, this industrial installation, to be on a residential property that either has a residence on it currently or which could be developed with a residence on it in the future. I just don't think that we should be putting these industrial solar installations on residential property or any part of them on the property. So those are my concerns and I'd appreciate it if they were all addressed or at least considered. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person will be Elaine.
Hello, welcome. Hello, can you hear me?
Go ahead. Yes. Please state your name for the record.
Elaine Caldron.
Thank you.
And I would like to address the proximity of the parcel, especially the 1.88 acre parcel to the Pocketuck River. I'm speaking today as the Hopkinton Town Representative to the Wood Pocketuck Wild and Scenic Rivers Stewardship Council. And just a little background, in March 2019, the Wood Pocketuck Watershed was designated as part of the National Wild and Scenic River System. Now, this is a huge honor. Less than 1% of streams in the U.S. can claim this designation. But along with this honor comes responsibility. The 12 towns contained in the watershed have a shared responsibility to ensure continued protection of this nationally recognized area for future generations. As outlined in chapter six of the stewardship plan, new alternative energy systems should be carefully decided to minimize any disturbance within the recommended one-quarter mile area along these nationally designated water bodies. The application before you includes a 1.88 acre solar array within a few hundred feet of the Pocketuck River. It's hard to imagine how this location will not adversely impact the river's outstanding and remarkable values, which as recognized by the Congress includes exceptional ecosystems, hydrological, geological values and scenic recreational value from the river. So our goal of the Stewardship Council is for the boards and councils of the towns to assess and consider the potential impact of proposed project to our National Wild and Scenic Rivers Outstanding and Remarkable Values. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next person will be last four digits, 4432.
This is Cynthia Johnson, Hope Valley, a member of the Hopkinton Land Trust. At our July 28 meeting, we discussed this project and while we don't have the expertise or, or the role to play to decide whether or not there should be a solar array here, we would be willing to support the solar array if in fact, the planning board and the town council are willing to let it be in this spot. We are more concerned at this time, as is our mission, to protect the rural character, the natural heritage and to protect the wetlands and the open space. So we're really interested more in the land below the right of way, that it be protected and that we should perhaps be able to negotiate somehow to have that, to protect the Pollicoon Bridge, to protect all of the Grills Walnut Sanctuary that's there. So we're looking at this project with that in mind and are, and are willing to work to the end to, to secure that for that end. So from our perspective, I think if we, we would be willing to allow the solar and to preserve the river drainage as kind of an environmental compromise. We feel that the project is being recommended on land that has, as long as I can remember, and I've lived here for 55 years, has been environmentally compromised and has not been in a pristine state in the whole time that I've been here. So that's it. Just wanted to make those comments or your considerations tonight at the meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Talia, do we have any more?
We do. Eight, two, two, two. Please state your name for the record.
Hi, this is Joe Moro from Old Depot Road. I just have a comment. Mr. Kamoli mentioned how gorgeous Chase Hill Road is with the stone walls, the Grills preserves and other things he talked about. And I agree with him. I go up and down that road quite a bit. So what do we want to do with this gorgeous property? We want to change it from commercial, from residential, I'm sorry, to commercial. You know, some of the questions I have, I don't expect the answers tonight because of the time constraints, but with the three-phase power, is that going to be coming in from Chase Hill Road? How many poles are we going to be looking at? You could down 216. There's a project you'll never see, but you do see it. You see the six, eight, 10 poles, whatever it may be. The most important point, I think, is, is to Emily's point. We are setting a precedent here. If this is approved, again, other residential homeowners could ask the same thing. This is another project that we're constantly being told that you'll never see it. Just drive around Hopkinton and let me know all the projects that you don't see. Three of our town council members have already said, and I agree 100% with them, enough is enough. Please stop trying to change residential property to commercial for an industrial manufacturing plant, especially in any area, but especially the gorgeous Chase Hill Road. Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Last four digits, five, seven, six, one. Please state your name for the record.
Hello, Carol DeRozier, Pleasant View Drive.
Thank you.
I also wanted to emphasize that this really does set a precedent regarding the solar ordinance and I don't think that should be taken lightly. And I also would reiterate what Joe Moro said around public view. We're talking about nine new poles. Those will clearly be visible from Chase Hill Road and look very industrial. And also, even though we're not getting into the detail, again, the setbacks are important. You know, as presented, they are not adequate for the abutting neighbors. So that's my summary. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Talia, are there any more?
No.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Planning board members, comments, questions?
Hello?
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 Go ahead.
This is Carolyn. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
I have a concern. Well, my first comment is it is residential. The comprehensive plan is firm and I don't think we can afford to keep making exceptions every time somebody says they need one. While I agree that the site seems conducive to what we're trying to do over here, I don't think that we can keep switching, changing the rules for every applicant that comes along. So with that said, a compli, comprehensive plan is only going to permit 1.17 acres for the entire project, including the fencing. Second, George had made a comment also that there was not going to be any traffic on Chase Hill Road and that Chase Hill Road isn't strong enough to support heavy construction vehicles. So on that note, we have to address that because there certainly is going to be a requirement for vehicles to get on-site for quite a while and they are heavy construction vehicles. And the other comment that I want to make is something else that George brought up, that the area of land where the solar panels are to be installed is what you're calling a brownfield. But I'm calling it potentially contaminated soil and that's why nothing grows there. So I think the potential for contamination, especially given the history of the salvage yard going back 50 or 60 years, I think we need to talk about how we want to look at that and view that. And if it is in fact a contaminated area, then I would encourage it to be cleaned up at a minimum because of its proximity to the Pocketuck River and the land trust for both Westerly and Hopkinton. That, that's all I have right now.
Thank you, Carolyn. Keith, do you have anything?
No, not tonight.
Okay, thank you. Emily?
I'm all set to, Ron. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Carolyn is here. We have four members. I would ask our attorney to say yea or nay on whether we could have a vote.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
This is Joel Roach again. I just want to address, you know, there were some concerns brought up and I'll be briefed by the neighbors and the board. Just, just for the record, you know, we're, we're bringing this presentation to you and I'm not going to beat a dead horse because of the uniqueness of the current uses of the property. And, and really that, there's no precedent being set. It's not going to, but it's not going to be the last project before you that attempts this, whether it be a landfill, you know, a private or a town project or another gravel bank. And I, I think that is in your ordinance and it's encouraged. What, what is difficult is, you know, if, if there's another project in front of you, it's not going to be three acres and it's not going to be 3% on those type of sites. What, just, just to, there's no, as the notice issue, you know, I don't want to go too far down that road, but this, this project and the notice requires, complies with both the Zoning Enabling Act and the Comprehensive Planning Act. And we're merely at the town council level complying with a request to notice an additional area, which we don't have a problem doing, including as one of your members requested, the Westerly Land Trust. That's fine. But I think what is, what is telling is hearing from the Hopkinton Land Trust, who I hope, you know, if we can get an approval and we proceed to major land development approval in front of you, that, I hope that they're part of the conversation as to the remaining portions of the site and, and what we can do in partnership with them. But it is, like she said, an environmentally compromised site. If we do get to major land development review, we will do what we need to do, testing and so on and so forth, but we're not talking about a residential use either. But certainly there will be requirements, whether they, you know, and we'll comply with whatever DEM needs us to do for this solar use. We've done it on other sites that I've worked on and we don't, we won't shy away from that. But what you're looking at is this, this property remaining in, in the state it's in and the uses it has because it just really doesn't have another choice. It's not going to go residential anytime soon in the near future or far future. So the, the best thing you can do is put this up for 30 years and, and hope that in the long term, that this, it, it's a use that is permitted under, and, and encouraged by the town in the future.
Okay, thank you.
Ron?
Yes, go ahead.
Karen?
Yes.
I just wanted to point, point out to you, if you, if you weren't looking at it, we're approaching that one hour mark on this project.
We are. But I was trying to let everybody in the audience have their say and let the presenters have their say without going too far. But yes, I agree, we're coming to the end of time here.
Sharon wants to make a comment.
Yes, I have eight oh six.
Hi, this is Sharon Davis. Yes, I do. I, I really agree that this, that this would set a precedent. It should only, it shouldn't be because it's in a residential area, number one. And number two, if anybody had any idea that they wanted to do something different, it absolutely exceeds everything. I agree with all of the comments that have been made that it, it traverses other residential areas. I do not think that this is a good thing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Sharon. Okay, moving on.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, go ahead.
Sean Clough here, town solicitor. My recommendation would be if the applicant has finished their presentation and there's no more public comment, that you entertain a vote to close the public hearing and then, then you have a second vote as to the advisory opinion. And again, I just want to remind the planning board that the, we've discussed a lot of several things about the application tonight. The legal question that is before the planning board this evening is related to the giving of an advisory opinion to the town council as to whether the planning board believes that the requesting zone change and change to the future land would be consistent with the comprehensive plan. So essentially, if, if you all believe that it would be consistent, you would give a positive advisory opinion. And if you believe the changes would be inconsistent, then you give a negative advisory opinion. So that's how I recommend you proceed.
Thank you, Sean.
Okay, thank you, Sean. Taking that into consideration, now to the applicants, have you presented everything that you need to present tonight? Are you comfortable with us moving on?
Yes, I am. I would just say that for the record, you know, I understand that this will go to the council for review. I'm a little disturbed by council people weighing in at this portion, but I just, I think that's not appropriate at this time and I just wanted to put that on the record.
Okay, thank you. To answer your question, Ms. Davis is our liaison to the, to the town council.
Yeah, I understand that. It wasn't, it wasn't a question, but I understand. I understand she's the liaison.
Okay, just as long as we're all clear on that. Okay, planning board members, do I have, or could I entertain a, a motion to close the hearing?
Hi, this is Carolyn. I make a motion to close the hearing.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion. Keith Lindelof.
Okay, thank you. And could we have a vote, please? Prowitz, yes.
Yes.
Shemchania, yes.
Okay, I guess that's it. I think Keith spoke at the same time as someone else, but that's okay. Okay, the hearing is now closed and I would entertain a vote on whether or not to send an opinion or which opinion to send to the town council. Planning board members, your pleasure.
This is Emily. I'd like to make a motion to advise the town council that a rezone of this property. And we're looking at, sorry. And we're looking at, sorry, what can I mean? We're looking at the land condominium unit number two on Flat Two, Lot 73, located near 136 Chase Hill Road. Is the rezone of this property and a change to the future land use map is not consistent with the Hopington comprehensive plan for the following reasons. It's not consistent with the conservation of Hopington natural resources, particularly the protection of the ground and surface waters, goal CON1. It's not consistent with the conservation of Hopington's major natural features and of its traditional rural character, which is goal CON2. It is not consistent with the preservation, conservation, and protection of the significant natural resources of Hopington as an endowment for the future of the town, which is goal NR1. It is not consistent with the intent for Hopington to be characterized by safe, secure, and attractive residential neighborhoods, that's goal H1. It's not consistent with the protection of the quality of life and rural character of Hopington, that's goal LU1. It is not consistent with the preservation of existing farms, wildlife, and wildlife habitat, that is goal LU4. And I'd just like to remind the folks, it's not consistent with economic development goals related to reducing the town's long-term energy costs, increasing the town's energy independence, or creating local jobs.
Okay, thank you, Emily. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Well said, Emily. Yes, I second the motion. Keith Lindelof here.
Okay, planning board members. What is your pleasure?
Carolyn Light, yes. I vote, I concur with Emily, yes.
Just to clarify, my motion is to send a negative advisory opinion, so a vote of yes, that you concur with a negative advisory opinion.
Correct, I agree. I concur, yes.
I think we need a second to the motion. We have a motion.
We did, we had a second.
Okay, okay.
Keith Lindelof here. I vote yes to send a negative opinion.
Shumshini, I vote yes.
Yes.
Carolyn, yes.
Okay, before I voice my vote, there are a few things that, in the comprehensive plan, could go either way. However, staying with the flavor of keeping Hopington rural, I vote yes as well. Now, that being said, there are still some hurdles that the applicant has to address. And as we have seen, this doesn't always mean the town council is going to follow our recommendation. Okay, so we are sending a negative advisory to the town council and we'll make a motion to move on and let Al come back and take the chair. We have a motion.
All square. Very good. Al DiOrio. Great job, guys and gals. Well done on a tough issue. Next item on the agenda is development plan review, photovoltaic solar energy system Revity Energy LLC, AP 7, Lot 62, 62A, and 63, 15 Frontier Road, Revity Energy LLC applicant.
Good evening, members of the planning board. This is Attorney Karen Browning. On behalf of Revity Energy, can you hear me okay? Yes, indeed. As you know, we've come before you several times. We've worked really hard together to get to this point. We have, we were last before you on August 5th, where we narrowed the issues and we've also worked with your planner to identify some conditions to place on a potential approval of this project. As a matter of housekeeping and for the record, I just want to make sure, Mr. Chair, that two items which have been sent to the town and circulated among the members have made their way into the record. I'd request at this time that the letter from Adler, Pollock, and Sheen addressed to Solicitor Calister and also the landscape plan, which has been updated as of August 20th, 2020. I'd request that both of those items be entered into the record.
So my recollection of our last discussion is that we had, we covered significant ground. There were maybe a couple of details that needed attending to and we're prepared to drill down on the conditions associated with a motion. Planning board members, is my recollection accurate and are you in agreement?
Yes.
Yes, Carolyn, yes.
Keith there, yes. Thanks, Al.
Thank you. So the items that I have in front of me, I'm looking at Jim's memo, August 26th. These have to do with decommissioning and our decision as to what to do with the value there. We have the issue of the landscaping plans and the landscaping buffer. And then we'd be on to our conditions of a motion. So let's just take them in order. Jim has decommissioning upfront. There was some discussion on how we would be handling this. We have an opinion from our solicitor. Planning board members, do you have any thoughts or comments on this particular topic?
Yes, I have a question.
Go right ahead, Ron.
In the decommissioning note here, the figures that are listed, now, if my memory is as clear as I think it is, at some point, the applicant had agreed to $343,254.85. Is that correct or was I not hearing?
I would concur with your recollection, but the applicant is out there.
Okay. Well, that was just a point of clarification. We can move on.
Okay. Was there something about that number that you wanted to, or were you just seeking consensus that that was agreed upon value?
Yes, just seeking the consensus that it was agreed upon value.
Okay. Planning board members, anything else to add to that topic?
I just have a quick comment, Al. This is, it's not a question or, you know, even meant to open discussion, but I just, before we close the issue entirely, I understand that, you know, according to the legal guidance provided by the town solicitor, the planning board, we must rely on this expert testimony that's been introduced into the record, which is, you know, essentially the estimate provided by Crossman Engineering with this additional 25% contingency added. That's what Ron was just talking about. But I think it's important that we also understand that the expert testimony introduced into the record also describes a level of uncertainty about the future cost of decommissioning that is pretty unsettling. The estimate that Crossman prepared assumes, for example, that the costs of decommissioning are going to be offset by an estimated salvage value. That is entirely speculative and I inserted the word entirely, but that's, other than that, it's a direct quote from Mr. Cabral from Crossman Engineering. He also stated it would be offset further by selling 50% of the panels for reuse at the end of their life. Crossman also assumes that the other 50% of panels would be recycled. They are the experts, but Mr. Cabral stated himself numerous times that all of these details are entirely speculative. So in other words, even though we all acknowledge that no one knows any of the conditions that will set the stage for what decommissioning will cost in 25 years, we're going forward with this number knowing full well that there's a really good chance that none of the panels could be resold at all, which would increase the decommissioning cost by a few hundred thousand dollars, for example. So I just worry that we've got this fairly inflexible framework here where if any of them wrong, and we're all admitting that we're probably wrong, the town of Hopington could be on the hook to front a significant amount of money at the time of decommissioning. And as a taxpayer who is planning to still be around in 25 years, that makes me really nervous and, to be honest, pretty unhappy. So I just wanted to say that. Thanks.
Thank you, Emily.
Chairman, this is Steve Cabral. Could I just clarify one item?
Go right ahead, Steve.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Oh, again, the previous speaker is correct because I know I did say it many times is that, that there is an unknown as to what a value of certain material will be 20 or 25 years in the future. So the previous speaker is correct. I have said that and I made sure that the board was aware of that because I wanted to make sure everyone understood that there is a speculative, speculative nature of forecasting the value of materials in the future. When it comes to the resale, the resale value that we provided is $175,000. So I just want to clarify, the resale estimate that we provided was not in the $300,000 range. And the value that we used for the resale is actually based upon the research that we found that even though the lifespan of this facility may be 20 to 25 years, data does show that a solar panel can be expected to be productive for 30 to 40 years. As time goes on, their efficiency does diminish. And the real value of those future panels is really going to depend upon the technology 25 years in the future. For example, will panels being produced 25 years from now produce more energy than the panels being produced today? And we took that into consideration when we utilized a sale price per panel of only $15 per panel. So even though all the numbers are speculative as to what value will be 20 years from now or 25 years, we did use numbers that we feel are on the conservative side based upon historical trends. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Very good. Thank you, Steve. I certainly would share Emily's concern about this topic. I'm really not pleased with the way it's been handled. No criticism of anyone involved. Just walking away from it, a little disappointed in the way, you know, we've been forced to come to a conclusion. I feel that some of the board's knowledge and intentions and authority have been usurped here a little bit. Again, I'm just not really pleased with that. I don't need to reopen this discussion. You know, the folks have spoken and, you know, the deed is done, but I'd like to also go on record expressing a little bit of dismay over the final outcome.
This is Carolyn Light. May I?
Yes, go right ahead.
I am formally going on the record. I agree with Emily. I agree with Al. I'm making the decision to, I feel like my hand is being held over a fire to pull this figure to satisfy something. And I don't feel comfortable with the decision that we're being forced into. That's basically what it comes down to. So we'll have to do what we have to do. But at some point, I'd like to know that our attorneys are going to be able to present the planning board with a thorough explanation as to why this has occurred the way it has. Because like Jim said, we're going to be confronted with solar projects for the next couple of years. And I don't want to enter into another, I don't want to engage in other projects, knowing that as much work that we put into this is ultimately going to come back to the same thing where we're being forced to make a decision that I'm not comfortable with. Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. Any other planning board members need to weigh in on this one?
Yes, this is Ron. I agree that Mr. Cabral's statement, I apologize for that, is true that we don't know what's going to happen in 25 years. The only thing that we do know that's going to happen is that if the $343,000 was put into an interest-bearing account in 20 years or 25 years, we're talking a serious increase in value. That being said, junk prices go up and down, salvage values go up and down. It's a gray area that we, there's no way that we can quantify it. Thank you.
Yep, thank you, Ron. Yep, that sounds like a concurrence that we're doing the best that we can do and, you know, looking 25 years into the future. I don't know who else can do that. Anyway, I don't need to belabor this. So we good on decommissioning? At some point, we'll wrap this into a motion, but if there needs to be any further discussion between the board members, this would be the time.
No, everyone said it pretty well and I agree with everyone said and, you know, we know almost exactly what's going to happen at the beginning. We have little surety of what's going to happen 25, 30 years from now because there's no one, anyone could know that. So it's frustrating for me to sit through all this when we're starting something that the next generation is going to have to deal with.
Okay, very good.
I hope I'm around that long too, but I know you will be, so.
Very good, thanks. Didn't mean to interrupt. Okay, it sounds to me like we're pretty well done on decommissioning. Can we move into landscape and landscape plans and landscape buffer? And I don't mind leading the discussion here. This has been one of those contentious issues throughout. The applicant, I think, has been, you know, very forthcoming and working with the board. I think we've nailed down a lot of things around this project and we have one outstanding area of concern, and that is the Maxon Hill Road side. I've had the opportunity to review Crossman's recent memo, August 25th. As I look this over, I got to tell you, this is entirely different than what I would have supported when we used the term selective clearing. I have an entirely different definition of this in my mind and, well, candidly, this ain't it. So, you know, I'm going to look to the very last paragraph here. It's on page three of Crossman's memo. And this is my proposal, that in the Maxon Hill area, we have a 100-foot vegetated buffer area set forth in the ordinance. My suggestion here is the 100-foot vegetated buffer stays as is. There's no clearing allowed within that area. So planning board members, you can take this opportunity to put a hole in my thinking or give me an alternative or agree with me, but let's hear what you have to say.
This is Carolyn. I have a brief comment. I think the owner of the project, the developers for this project, mentioned at our last meeting that it was their intention to plant seeders in white pines to accommodate this. We had a little bit of debate about the understory. And then while I was pondering all of this and reviewing it for tonight's meeting, what I noted was that the developer and the town are both agreeing that full-grown trees in that buffer zone are appropriate. So why cut down what's there and plant new growth when 30 or 40 years down the road, you're going to have the mature trees that we're all looking for? It's a, I think it's a short-sighted view and it really shouldn't be up for debate because their long-term goal is to have full mature growth, which does not contradict what we're saying to maintain all of the growth in that 100-foot buffer zone. That's it. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Carolyn. Other planning board members on this topic?
Keith here, Al, thank you. Hundred percent. Sorry, Emily, go ahead.
No problem. Thanks, Keith. I agree.
No problem. Thanks, Keith. I agree. No clearing to be consistent with our ordinance and the recommendation of the solicitor on this topic. Really not interested in finding out some of the details that are proposed as an alternative, like tree height determined by a solar matrix. That sounded terrible. Let's just not cut anything. Thanks.
Very good. Thank you, Emily.
Okay, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'm looking over the paragraph that you mentioned, paragraph 13. And in my mind, they've already agreed to that. When they put "as much as feasible"... Now, there's a couple of trees there that are dead and hanging and could be a danger. In my mind, those should probably go. But they've already stated in section 13 that they're going to leave as much as they can. Not cut anything. That's just by two cents worth.
Got it. I have this on, just as a quick aside, I have this highlighted in my version. And the only thing that's not highlighted and as a strikeout is the word, are the words "as much as feasible." So, that kind of language, that doesn't fly. It starts with "the preferred buffer." So, there's no clearing. I concur with Ron that dead and dangerous vegetation, even DEM allows that to be removed without a permit. So, I don't have a problem with dead and dying. But we're not going to leave this to the applicant to decide what's feasible, what's reasonable, to the extent possible that language is throughout the tentative conditions. Those things are going to be stricken, as far as I'm concerned. This is a black-and-white issue. It's going to have to be enforced by Jim at some point in the future. And I don't expect any gray areas here. So, I'm looking for definitive, black-and-white, yes or no, you're going to cut it, you're not going to cut it. And that's the kind of language that I'd like to see in the... in the decision.
Okay, thank you, Al. I agree with that.
So then, on the issue of landscaping, are we all in agreement that at least as far as the Maxon Hill Road area is concerned, this is a vegetated buffer that is not going to be cut?
Mr. Chair, this is Karen Browning on behalf of the applicant. Will we have a chance to respond?
I'm sure you will at some point.
Okay.
Planning board members, are we all in agreement?
Carolyn, yes.
Ron, yes.
Yep.
Okay, so then, according to my notes, we're ready to move into the... to hashing out the details of a possible motion. And I would suggest that this might be the time that the applicant, as we go through these various issues, or items, I should say, this would be the time that the applicant might want to chime in in terms of any concerns that they might have. Sound reasonable to everybody?
Yeah.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, Karen Browning, again, just so we're clear, does it make sense for us to respond to landscaping issues now and then move on to conditions?
Well, one of the proposed conditions, I don't mean to take anything away from my colleagues here, but as I look toward a proposal that's been put forth, I'm looking at page three, item number five, vegetation is one of those things we're going to talk about. So, I would say that when we get to item number five, the planning board has already reached a consensus. But if you'd like to introduce some evidence at that point, that would be the appropriate time.
Okay.
All right. So then, planning board members, again, we have this proposal in front of us. There's a proposed motion. I think that items... I'm looking at page two now. First of all, the document is Jim's memo of August 26. Page two, proposed motion, looks like items one through five are fairly straightforward. Those are kind of templated stuff. Everybody okay with those?
Ron, yes. Keith, yes.
Carolyn, yes.
Emily, yes.
Good, thanks. And again, someone's going to have to read this into the record. I'm just looking to, in the... in an effort to save a little time here, just get consensus on the ones that we can all agree on. And then we can trash out the ones that might be a little bit more complicated. So then, on page three, there's another whole series of proposed conditions. They...
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Karen Browning on behalf of the applicant, we have one suggested change to the first paragraph before numbers one through five, which highlight, which is titled "Motion."
Okay, go right ahead.
Within that paragraph, it states, "Hopkins and Planning Board approves the overall site layout plan." I think it's important that we be clear about what is being approved. It's not just the one overall site layout plan. It's a series of plans and documents that were submitted for approval.
All right, that's a good point. So, do we want to create a list of those plans that we're actually approving with their correct dates?
I have a list. I'll leave it up to you, Mr. Chair. We can certainly provide that list on the record. Or we can provide it, you know, after it's going to match all of the plans that were submitted. It's up to you.
Yeah, Jim Lamphier, Town Planner. What was suggested to me by the applicant's attorney today, Tennesse Azar, is that the applicant would be willing to write up a proposed motion to approve this project. And it would be my expectation that in that proposed motion would include all of the documents that Karen Browning is mentioning right now. You know, one suggestion I might have for the board tonight to get through this is, let's go through and tentatively approve items, you know, conditions one through 25, amend them as the board feels necessary. And once we have a tentative agreement on each one of these points, we could always come back at the next meeting with all that tentative agreements in place and a motion. And we could probably wrap this up quite quickly, depending upon how the landscape plan irons out when we get to that item right there. But I would probably suggest that we go through these numbers, one through 26, and at least get some kind of momentum going, positive momentum and tentative agreements. And then let's... Then remaining would be the items that we need to really focus on from there. But... So, I'm not sure if we're prepared for an official motion. I just... My sense on this particular project is that it is so important, so sensitive. There are so many elements to this project. And clearly, you know, the applicant has had a couple of law firms now weigh in on this already. So, that shows how closely the applicant is watching everything that the planning board does. So, I think, you know, with that in mind, I think it's very important that we meticulously, as a planning board, look at everything and make sure that we're all on the same page. We know what we're agreeing to. There's no ambiguities, no vagueness. And maybe the next meeting, we come out with a definite approval. So, that's my suggestion.
Okay. Sounds like a reasonable suggestion. First of all, let me see. Planning board members, what do you think about this idea? Speak right up.
This is Carolyn. The girls are on the same team.
Now, that's scary. I agree with Jim. I think that's a good way to go. Get all our ducks in a row and get their opinions. Now, Ms. Browning said they have things that they want to put in to Jim's office. So, if we look at all of that, so we see what we're agreeing to, and make our suggestions, and they look at our suggestions, and they agree to that, then we can move forward from there.
Okay, good. Any other planning board members want to weigh in on this?
I think that, not to drag it out, but I think that our diligence is the correct thing to do. And Jim's suggestion is very good.
Okay. I say we do that. I'm in agreement. Okay, so then, the issue of the exact plans, a plan set that we're going to approve, that's one of those items that I'm going to let the applicant and Jim work out. We're going to have a set of approved plans that we're all agreeing on. That's... Those are the ones that are going to be recited in the motion. So then, on to items one through 25, as identified on pages three and four of the memo that I'm referring to. First item has to do with the decommissioning estimate in the order... in the amount of 343, 254, 85. Planning board members?
I'm in agreement.
This is Carolyn. I am uncomfortable with the word, "represents the complete cost of removal." But given that this isn't going to be able to be changed, then I would be in agreement with it as well.
Yeah, right. How about if we insert the word speculative cost in terms of complete, since we're all in agreement that we're taking our best shot at this? Anyway, I'm being partly facetious. I concur with you, Carolyn. This... That's not exactly the word that I would use here because it seems to endorse the fact that we have this thing nailed down tightly when in fact, we're all admitting that it's about as loose as it can possibly be. So, can we just strike the whole idea that, you know, we think this is the complete cost?
About substituting the word estimates.
There we go. Yep.
Represents the estimated cost.
Yep. I'm in agreement with that.
This is Carolyn. I didn't catch that, Mr. Chair. What was the proposed edit to that, number one?
Yeah, this is Jim Lamphier, Town Planner. Striking the word "complete" and substituting "estimated" represents the estimated cost of removal.
Thank you.
Planning board, okay with number one?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
So, some of these are going to be templated. How about if we just say that, as we look at number two, for example, if anyone object, any planning board member objects, or this would apply to the applicant too, if you object, just sing out. Otherwise, I'm going to presume that you're okay with that language. That work for everybody?
Understood. Understood.
Okay. So, item number two, if anyone objects, speak up. Otherwise, that language stays.
Might you want to do a roll call to facilitate?
Well, since we're only seeking consensus on the items, I'm really not looking for a vote. So, I'll tell you what. I'll give you... I'll give everybody five seconds. If I don't hear anything, I'm moving on to the next item. That's good.
Rather than just call it out by number, you want to make sure that the board has all these things in front of them that they're looking at as you read them. And it might... That'll take up a little bit of time to begin with, okay? And it'll ensure that the board heard every word.
I understand. It's also good for the public because I'm not sure that everybody has this document. Okay, I will do that. I'll read the item. I'll give everybody a few seconds. If I don't hear anything, I'm going to move on to the next one. Okay? So, let me just back up and let me read item number one so that we just take this right from the top. It says, "The applicant shall post financial security in the form of an interest-bearing escrow account in the amount of $343,254.85, as described..." parentheses, "...as described in more detail in the Crossman decommissioning estimate of June 12th, which represents the estimated cost of removal in the event that the... in the event the town or its contractor must remove the PSES." Item number two, "The applicant shall construct, operate, and maintain the PSES in accordance with all applicable federal, state, and local requirements." Item number three, "Regarding the well located on the site and servicing the abutting restaurant property, if the well remains active on the site, the applicant shall obtain Rhode Island Department of Health approval to implement the overall site development plan approved by the Hopkinton Planning Board, or relocate the well to another location acceptable to DOH." Item number four, "The applicant will adhere to all setbacks as indicated on the approved plan." Number five, "To the extent possible, the understory vegetation along Maxon Hill Road will remain in place and be supplemented with additional planting of evergreen trees of a minimum of six feet in height at the time of planting as set forth on the approved landscaping plan."
This is Emily. This is one where I would strike the "to the extent possible."
I concur.
Carolyn, I concur.
And actually, I might go so far as to strike the following two words, "the understory." I believe our intention here is to maintain the vegetation in its entirety, in its current condition. So, we're not just talking about the understory. We're talking about all the vegetation.
Yep, agreed. This is Emily.
Okay.
Agreed, Al. Thank you.
Ken, can we respond?
Yes, of course. This would be your opportunity.
So, a couple of items. And then I think it's important that the board hear from our landscape architect. First of all, and I know this was brought up at the last meeting, I'm going to reiterate our legal objection for the record, that the interpretation that the board is following with regard to the language in the solar ordinance is incorrect. The... If... It goes against not only case law, which is very clear, on the way that courts have instructed boards to apply and interpret their ordinances in favor of the property owner. But also, just on its face, the way the ordinance is written, that provision is meant for RFR-80 parcels that have been rezoned. As stated at the top of the meeting, an additional letter was sent by Adler, Pollak, and Schand to the solicitor on this issue. I won't read the letter into the record. We've already agreed that that letter has been made part of the record. I do, however, renew our objection at this time. I also want to point out that your ordinance for this property, which you know is zoned manufacturing, does not place this type of restriction on any other use that would be allowed at the property. To take that one step further, by ordinance, this project has a maximum solar coverage amount of 75%. What that means is that we... What that means is that we could cover approximately 75% of this property, because it's manufacturing zoned. The planning board's interpretation of this provision flies in the face of that requirement. We are basically saying that if you were to enforce this the way you're trying to do, you would in fact be going against your own ordinance, which allows 75% of coverage. You'd be restricting that coverage. You'd be bringing it down. Those two things don't add up. I also want to be clear. The setback, excuse me for just a second. There's a difference between buffers and setback. The setback is only 50 feet in the underlying zoning. The 100-foot is for structures only. At this point, I think it makes sense to have our landscape architect talk to you about a very productive site visit, which we had with your engineering consultant, Crossman, where we went to the site, we viewed the Maxon Hill area, and we discussed what I feel is a very sophisticated and science-based compromise that will not only protect the town's interest, and what I'm hearing from the members' interests in protecting the setback, the trees, the environment, but also allow this project to go forward. Because, let's be clear, the applicant is not seeking to clear trees for the sake of clearing trees. They are seeking only to clear trees that will affect the shading on the panels. If solar panels are shaded, and the sun does not reach them in an efficient manner, the project suffers. And it is only for that reason, and with that goal in mind, that clearing, any clearing at all is proposed in this area. So at this time, I would like John Carter from Carter Landscaping to talk a little bit about what happened at the site visit, and also what was decided and ultimately updated on the landscaping plan, so that the board has a full understanding of, of what we are proposing.
Thank you. Can you hear me? This is John Carter.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chairman, am I good to go?
Yes.
Okay. What I'd like to just do, and I know you're on a time constraint, so I'll be concise. We did have a meeting on the 18th, and we met with representatives from Crossman Engineering, as well as myself and Dave Russo, the engineer, and a couple of the Revity principals. And Linda Rogers, who's a landscape architect who consults with Crossman Engineering, was there, as well as Doug, who was the engineer. And the first thing is that, to describe the conditions along Maxon Hill Road, on the westerly side of Maxon, Maxon Hill Road, between the edge of the pavement and the property, the subject property, it's a, primarily an overstory of deciduous trees with a fairly dense understory of deciduous shrubs. There's some evergreen, white pine that are filling in on their own, and the understory, sort of a successional. But I think that the general consensus was that, from the road, the overstory did not provide significant screening. It was the understory that any of the plants from like ground level up to 10 or 15 feet. And what the applicant would like to do, and is proposing, and as Karen said, is based on a sort of scientific, it's not just a whim, or a need to get more space, but it has to do with reducing the impact of shade on the panels, because the panels won't work in the shade. So, there's a ratio between the distance from the panels to the height of the trees, in this case, or whatever object would be blocking the sun. And it's basically, the panels need to be set back a distance of twice what the height of the object blocking, in this case, the trees. So, this is not a proposed clear cutting of... It's a selective tree removal based on the impact by shade. And that can be, that's not a gray area. That can be documented very easily, both during the process when the trees would be removed, and in the future, if there was clipping, or cutting, or maintaining, to maintain that, you know, the benefit of that. So, what we showed, so we, so we were all, that was the conversation among everybody. And Mr. Lampier was there also, excuse me. And he participated, and the Crossman people participated, and so forth. So, that was what we talked about. My opinion, there seemed to be a concern. That's what, how we would go forward. There was some discussion about, well, how do you monument that on a plan, so the board would be comfortable what they were approving, so that going forward, the town could enforce this? So, the drawing that we did, the profile with the matrix on it, with the height to the horizontal and vertical grid, with the height, the distance, is documented. That could be documented on the ground. We did put a stake on the ground and stood there and looked at. And it would, it can be enforced going into the future. So, we received the memorandum, which is dated August 24th. And in general, we're in agreement. Last, number 13, that I believe Karen DiOrio referred to, sort of was hanging on the end of this thing, and it kind of contradicted what this said. Because it says, it's that, you know, that the heights of the trees could be maintained at the height determined by the solar matrix, and so forth. So, it describes all of that. And then at the end, it made some suggestions, the one through 13, most of which were with. There's a couple of words that may be modified, if that's adopted, but I will leave that. I won't drill down on that for a moment. So, I left the meeting, and I believe the rest of the, at least I know the Revity people did, the engineer did, and I thought we were all in a consensus. This was a reasonable balance between maintaining and supplementing. We did talk about additional plantings we added. And so maintaining what's there, supplementing it as necessary, and then presenting it in some sort of a diagram that could be understood and verified, and going into the future, so it was able to be enforced, and everybody understood what they agreed to. So it's not a clear cutting of the vegetated area. It would leave a strip of vegetation with some trees of varying height, deciduous trees of varying height, and all the understory to the best of our ability, we're working in there. So, that's sort of a summary of the meeting, and what I thought was the tenor of the meeting, and the understanding and the agreement that we all had when we left the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Mr. DiOrio, if I may, this is Steve Cabral.
Yes, Steve.
From Crossman. Yeah, there were just two, you know, two issues that I just want to point out. One is the, as you all and the applicant discussed, the legal issue of what's allowed in the buffer. I won't comment on that, but we know that is certainly a primary concern of the planning board. And the other issue is that, when we originally looked at the shade analysis, the maximum tree height, which is depicted on the upper right corner of sheet three or four of John Carter's landscape plan, it, you know, initially, we had the impression that there are trees there that would be remaining, you know, based upon this diagram. But then, as we examined the details, we realized that the actual height of the trees were never identified. So, we don't know, we honestly don't know if all of the trees would be cut within the land between the panels in Maxon Hill Road, because we don't believe, or our understanding is that the height of the existing trees were not yet measured. And if they weren't measured, it's unknown which ones have to be cut. The diagram looks good on the plan, but those trees showing to remain, may not remain if they're above a certain height.
This is John Carter, if I could just reply. I think Steve is correct in some respects, but we have, we've had that discussion. If we went, we all were standing there saying that, that no trees would be cut until the town had an opportunity to see which ones were going to be cut. But really, that would have to happen at some point further in the project. Before anything was cut, they could be identified and flagged, but, or spray painted, or some otherwise marked. Everybody was in agreement that they did in fact meet this, the intent of this diagram that we did. It would be difficult to do that now, and I'm not sure it would even be that enlightening in terms of the effect it would have.
Again, Steve Cabral, what it would tell us is whether or not, they would tell the board whether or not all the trees in that area would be removed, or if most of them would stay. If we knew the height of those trees today, then everyone would be able to understand what trees would remain. Right now, it sounds as though you're proposing that, don't worry about it. It'll be determined. We'll let you know which ones we're gonna cut after the fact. And I think that's a little too late. That's why we inserted the comments, the recommendations on page two and three of the August 24, 2020 memo. Because as we learned more about the proposal, we wanted to make sure that the planning board members were aware of the potential cutting if it was to proceed based upon this diagram.
John Carter, again, in... So, in the, in the letter that we received, let me just walk through quickly some of the, some of the observations we had, with some of the language in it, based on what we understood. If I may, and I don't know if people have this August 24, 2020 landscape in front of them, but I'll kind of read it if you don't, or if you have it, you can read along. Under the title, "Areas Designated for Selective Clearing", number one says, "Existing trees and understory vegetation are remain in their existing state along the street frontage, Maxon Hill Road." Well, I believe the intent of that sentence is within the road right of way. Several trees along the road, and shrubs, that are in the road right of way, and without saying the matter, their height, or their impact on shade, or anything, they're gonna remain.
Oh, John, oh, John, I don't, I don't mean to disturb you or interrupt, but I just want to clarify, and maybe this will change your reading of this. The intent of the first two pages was just to reiterate what the proposal was. It does not indicate that that's what we were agreeing to. Our comments are at the bottom of page two, where it states comments. And those comments are based upon our consideration of your newest plans in the proposal.
Yeah, thank you. I, I understand that, but as you said, those are your understandings, and we agree with most of what you said, and we were all there. Well, I was there, certainly. But that clarification that I just made, I think is important, that that was what we were proposing, and that should be read. It was, it may be minor, but that's what we're saying, that it would be within the road right of way, not along the frontage on Maxon Hill Road. And then, again, number two, yes, that's correct. That's what we proposed and what we discussed. We did say that, so this would be in according with this matrix that we drew. The understory plant would stay.
John, I'm, Al DiOrio, let me interject here.
Yeah.
I'm not gonna have you read this document to me. Planning board has this memorandum. They have your landscaping plan. We understand that you met in the field, that you, you all reached some consensus. That's great. Good for you. I believe the planning board is taking a contrary position here. So while it's great that this is in evidence, it's on the record, we don't have to hear it again. And especially in light of the fact that the planning board has already opined on their position here, I kind of feel like you're beating a dead horse. Forgive the, forgive that encapsulation. So, again, I don't mean to cut you short, counsel. I don't mean to abbreviate any testimony that you want to put on the record, but we're burning daylight.
Mr. Chair, Karen Brown, on behalf of the applicant. Our team has put in enormous amount of effort and work to take the comments that we have heard from the board members and square that against the fundamental need of this project to succeed, which is the ability to have panels that don't have shade on them. And it is important that we have a discussion about the meeting that was had, the changes to the landscaping plan, and our comments to the memo that was received from the town's engineer, which, as Mr. Carter pointed out, we are largely in agreement with. I see this issue as coming down to two parts. The first part is the matrix that was proposed as a matter of maintenance to the property. Meaning, once the panels are installed, and this project is under construction, if we agree that we want the panels to be functional, fully functional without shade, there has to be some sort of a plan in place that protects us and protects the town, so that going forward, everybody is on the same page. And that is in response to the board's concerns and the comments that we heard. So that's the first issue. The second issue that I'm hearing has to do with which trees, as an initial part of the project, would be cut in order for that matrix to then take over. So again, I think it's imperative that Mr. Carter be allowed to go through the very few comments that we have in the Crossman report, and then explain the changes that were made to the landscaping plan, so that the board members who have concerns about this issue can understand not only the level of effort that we have put into this, but also gain a level of comfort that this area will be protected, it will be supplemented, it will be maintained, and it will be monitored well into the future.
I hear your thoughts. Planning board members, help me out here. I, I'm, I certainly don't want to, to abbreviate the applicant's right to put anything they want on the record, but I, this is running in a circle for me. So please chime in. Let me know what you would like to... So please chime in, let me know what you would like to do here.
I agree with the chairman, I think we should be moving on a little bit. We've, we've pretty much heard everything that needs to be said.
This is Carolyn. I think we're ready to move on, and this discussion is approaching an hour. And I would like the attorney for the applicant to recognize the fact that the planning board, plus all of those people that are on the team, have also invested an awful lot of time, and we've stated our opinion, and I am ready to move forward.
With all due respect, and we don't disagree, everybody's put a lot of effort into this. We've already explained that we disagree with the board's interpretation on this issue. However, and despite that, we are trying to come to some sort of an agreement, especially given the level and sophistication of this compromise. We would expect that the board would want to hear us out. As I said, the remaining comments on the Crossman Engineering Report and the few changes to the landscaping plan should not take that long. And, and I think it's important that the board hears from our landscaping architect on that issue.
With all due respect, counsel, I think that, I think you've heard from the board members. We, we have your information. We certainly appreciate the level of effort that you put into this, but I think I'm ready to move on. If you have concerns, especially on the issue of our interpretation of the ordinance, there's a different forum for that, and this is not that forum. So unless I hear something else, I'm prepared to move to item number six.
Mr. Chairman, this is Sean Clough, Town Solicitor, if I may jump in. I just want to make sure I understand the attorney for the applicant correctly. Are you saying, Karen, that you have additional relevant evidence that you would like to put on, on the record as it relates to this selective clearing? Am I, am I understanding that correctly?
That is correct. We have comments to the Crossman Engineering Report, and we also have made changes to the landscaping plan, which were made after the last hearing and after we had the site visit. So the answer to your question is yes.
Right. Mr. Chairman, with all due respect, I do think that to allow the applicant to present their application in full and the comments to this newly added memorandum from August 24th, I would say to the, to the applicant and all involved that, given the late hour that this, these comments be addressed as quickly as possible, I don't think the planning board needs a reading of the entire memo into, into the record since the memo has been placed on the record. But brief and concise comments, I think, would be necessary. But of course, I leave that to the chairman.
Okay, I hear the advice. Although it's against my better judgment, the applicant should proceed.
Mr. Chairman, John Carter. I'm going to be quick, I'm going to, I hear what people are saying. So, back to the memo, if I may. On the first page, number three, we just proposed that at the end of that, it would say, "To the extent possible." On number four, "To the extent possible" also needs to be amended to, because the desire is to maintain and, and remain, leave behind as much understory as possible, but we suggest it would all stay there, it would be there to the, as much possible during the clearing. And then to the next page, seven, where it talks about drip line protection, and yes, that would be, would be done along the limit of the clearing in order to protect the tree board at the toe of the berm. Moving down, under the proposed berm areas, number four, the fence, we think it should designate, it should state the chain link fence, because that's a change we proposed on the plan that I'll point out. Then we get underneath the comments. The last sentence says, "Therefore, a more exact tree removal proposal is needed for the board's understanding of the proposal." That's what I believe Mr. Cabral was referring to. And we think that it would be appropriate to say that prior to the tree clearing, that the trees to be removed will be identified, so that the, the town, through its representative, you know, look at them. So just simply an identity, trees would be identified.
Karen Browning, can you be clear about that? How would the trees be identified?
That any of the trees with, that qualified for removal in the matrix that we've suggested, if that's approved, any trees proposed to be removed would be identified based on their height and location, and either flagged with a ribbon or painted, have some sort of marker put on them, so people could go look at them, know ahead of time, those are the trees proposed to be removed. And then on, the last page, under the one through thirteen, under the comments, number four, we just suggested that it says, "Leaves the applicant's sole discretion to remove vegetation and add trees. The town's involvement is recommended." And it was suggested that that be stricken off, because it's open ended, what is the involvement of the planner, whoever the designated person is, what do they, would they even know what it is they're supposed to be doing? We, we're not, it's not our sole discretion. It would be an agreed upon number of trees, based on the matrix, based on them being identified and approved, that yes, in fact, those would be. And then number 10, again, it talks about drip line protection. And I know in the conversations at the site, with the landscape, with your landscape architect and so forth, concern about impact on the trees that are going to remain, and that's a valid impact. Heavy machinery or equipment should be prohibited from these areas within the drip line protection zone. Just wanted to state that that is contrary to what we're proposing. If we're proposing to remove the trees, equipment would have to go in there to take the trees out. So that would be an appropriate leave there, and be able to be met. Number 12, it was really just a matter of, of, of language, I think would benefit the town and the applicant as time went on. Number 12 says, "Arbor voiding with extensive deer damage should be replaced at the town's discretion." Well, the town's discretion is wide open, both for the town, the applicant, and everybody. I believe that, that a requirement that plants be maintained and that they're warranted after one year or two years is appropriate. The deer are obviously a concern, the deer are obviously going to cause some damage to the trees, but if buffer is to be maintained, it'll be maintained, and it doesn't need that to say at the town's discretion, kind of leaves it wide open for everybody, and nobody really knows what that means. So that's the comments on the memorandum. Is, we, based on the last, based on the feedback, our understanding, and our meeting on the site, and our discussion, and my understanding of what we discussed, we went forward and made some revisions to the plan. One of them was, we took the wooden fence out. That seemed to be, we put that in originally in response to comments, we took it out in response to board comment. They didn't want the wooden fence. There'll be a chain link fence, there'll be a berm, and there'll be evergreen plantings on top of the berm. That in itself will provide a significant buffer from Maxon Hill Road. On the plans. We also, as you're all aware, we put this, calculated this shade matrix, tree removal matrix, and underneath it, it described the process and the responsibilities of the developer to develop this buffer in accordance with this approved plan. Those are primarily the changes. And that, that concludes my comments.
Okay, very good. Is there any new evidence that you'd like to put forth, counsel?
I would just ask that Mr. Palumbo be given a chance to speak from Revody Energy if he has anything to add.
With regards to this item.
Okay. We can move on. Almost there. Thank you.
Okay, so I guess, planning board members, in light of the new evidence, I'd like to bring your attention back to item number five. Are we still in agreement that item number five stands? Or would you like to make some amendment to item number five? Please advise.
I believe that we, this is Carolyn, still need to strike, "To the extent possible," the understory.
I agree.
Emily, I agree.
Okay, there's the consensus.
I agree with.
Oh, very good, Rod. Yes, I'm sorry.
No, that's, that's fine, I was just agreeing with everybody.
Yep, good. Okay, number five, done. Moving on to number six. "The applicant shall comply with all applicable responsibilities and obligations of the Hopkinton zoning ordinance, including but not limited to Chapter 246 entitled Non-Residential Photovoltaic Solar Energy Systems Ordinance adopted January 22, 2019." Item number seven, "The proposed PSES should be designed and constructed in accordance with all applicable fire codes, as such may be interpreted by the fire marshal. Construction of any PSES will not be allowed until a design has been approved by the fire Number eight, "The establishment of the proposed PSES will not prevent the normal and orderly use, development, or improvement of the adjacent property for uses permitted in the district." Item number nine, "The applicant and/or current project owner shall avoid any disruption, interference with, or loss of radio, telephone, television, or similar signals, and shall mitigate any such harm caused by the PSES." Number 10, "All reasonable precautions must be taken to protect neighboring properties from exposure to any radiation produced as a result of the PSES, including but not limited to high levels of radio frequency electromagnetic radiation." Item number 11, "Sound emitted by the PSES will not exceed 40 decibels as measured at the property line. The applicant has indicated that mitigation measures may be required to meet this requirement. Within 90 days of the solar farm becoming operational, the applicant and/or current property owner will conduct a post-construction environmental noise assessment to determine if mitigation is necessary and to verify that sound emitted by the PSES shall not exceed 40 decibels as measured at the property line. The town shall select independent engineers to review the post-construction environmental noise assessment for completeness and accuracy at the applicant and/or current property owner's Item number 12, "No blasting shall be conducted on the parcel in conjunction with any activity related to the construction of the PSES, including land preparation." Item number 13, "The PSES and equipment shall not have a significant adverse impact upon the soils, water resources, air quality, or other natural resources of the land or surrounding area."
This is Carolyn. I would like to see the word adverse.
I'm sorry, Carolyn, again, please.
Sorry, I would like to see the word adverse drop.
I'm sorry, adverse, deleted, is that your comment?
True, yes.
Mr. Chair, that, Karen Browning on behalf of the applicant, that, number 13, is from your ordinance, it's a direct quote, we would object to changing the language.
In the recommended points that Jim had sent us earlier, it was stated as significant impact. This one is suggesting adverse. And it doesn't necessarily have to be adverse to still create an impact. I'd like to get it back to just a general impact, because nobody is going to be onsite to actually define what adverse is or not. We just need to leave it at a more general state, and I would prefer significant instead of adverse.
Again, Mr. Chair, Karen Browning, the purpose of DPR, as you know, is to compare the standards that are set forth in your ordinance to the application. It is not to change the standards. That would be a change to the standard as set forth by ordinance, we would object.
Understood.
Jim Lamphier, Town Planner, I would agree with that. I would, I would leave the word adverse in there.
Is, is the word adverse in the ordinance?
I believe it is, as a matter of fact, yep.
Carolyn, I'm going to suggest that, as, as much as you might not like that word, if it's in the ordinance, I'm going to be suggesting that we've all been adhering to the ordinance all along, let's be consistent.
I might add, Jim Lamphier, Town Planner, again, I might add that, Carolyn, if you look at those conditions, one through five, if you look at number two, it, it pretty much covers it right there anyway. "The granting of approval will not result in conditions inimical to public health." So basically, that, that covers it. Harmful, means harmful. So.
Got it.
Okay, I'm gonna scroll through the ordinance, we can move on, I'm not stuck there.
Got it, thank you. Item number 14, "All pertinent structures and equipment shall be screened from view by vegetation and joined or clustered to avoid adverse visual impacts to any adjacent property that is residentially zoned and/or used for residential purposes. The visual screen shall be maintained in a manner consistent with the original approval and approved landscape plan that reasonably and effectively shields the project until the PSES is decommissioned. The owner of the PSES and any successors shall maintain the screen and understory cover. In the event that the screening is not constructed or maintained consistent with the approved landscaping plan, the town may contract with a registered landscape architect currently licensed and authorized to practice in the state of Rhode Island and at the applicant and/or current property owner's expense to review said screening and to recommend solutions to rectify the inadequacy and/or failure. Upon notification, the applicant and/or current property owner shall promptly work with the registered landscape architect to ensure screening is consistent with the approved Item number 15, "Any equipment to use aloud, I'm sorry, utilizes fluid shall be outfitted with a containment mechanism sufficient to contain at least 125% of said fluid in which prevents said fluid contact with the ground." Item number 16, "Throughout the life of the project, the owner of the PSES will provide copies of all correspondence with federal and state agencies pertaining to project permits and regulatory requirements." Item number 17, "The applicant and/or current property owner shall submit an as-built plan, prepared, stamped, and signed by a registered professional land surveyor, licensed and currently authorized to practice in the state of Rhode Island, showing the actual location of any installed solar energy equipment. If the equipment is not installed as permitted, the town may order its removal and/or its relocation as appropriate." Item number 18, "The applicant and/or current property owner shall maintain the PSES and ..." in a neat, clean, operable condition at all times, ensuring the structural and technical integrity of the facility. All maintenance shall be performed in a timely manner. Maintenance shall include but not be limited to structural repairs and integrity of security measures, fencing, and vegetative buffers. Item number 19, site access shall be maintained to a level acceptable to the fire chief or fire marshal and emergency medical services. Item number 20, the applicant and/or current property owner shall be responsible for the cost of maintaining the PSES and any access road unless adapted as a public way, and shall bear the cost of repairing any damage occurring as a result of operation and construction. Item number 21, the town engineer designated shall inspect the PSES at the expense of the applicant and/or current property owner on a weekly basis during construction and during the month of April each year after completion of construction. Said inspection will include a review of any and all reports as required by the state of Rhode Island and the town of Hopkinton and the federal government. The applicant and/or current project owner shall reimburse the town for any cost incurred as specified in the stormwater facility maintenance agreement. Item 22, at any time during the project construction, the building/ zoning official and town engineering consultant may inspect the PSES to ensure compliance with the provisions of the PSES ordinance. Item 23, the final design of the containment mechanisms for any equipment that utilizes fluid, designed to contain at least 125% of said fluid, will be included in the application for the building permit by the applicant and/or current property owner. Such plans must be prepared, stamped, and signed by a registered professional engineer, licensed, and currently authorized to practice in the state of Rhode Island. The applicant and/or current property owner will formally agree to implement those containment mechanisms during project construction. Item 24, equipment pads that house equipment that utilizes fluid are to be sealed using material that is chemically compatible with the fluid utilized in the equipment. And item number 25, the applicant shall provide to the town planner specifications and equipment, I'm sorry, specifications and information related to the maintenance schedule of the transformers used on the site. End of document. So that's going to be the tentative motion, subject to some of the discussion that we've had, most importantly perhaps including and identifying more precisely the exact plans with their current dates that are being approved by the planning board. Everybody in agreement?
Ron, yes.
Keith, yes. Thank you, Al, for reading that.
Emily, yes. This is Carolyn. Is it appropriate to restrict the construction hours for this project to Monday to Friday, 8 to 5?
Sounds appropriate to me.
Thank you.
Do you want to include that? If so, could you just elaborate and be specific for the record so we can get that into the motion?
Okay, I would like these conditions to include that all site work be performed Monday through Friday between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. EST. We don't want construction being conducted after, in the evening hours, in the early morning hours, or on the weekends.
I understand. Good suggestion.
Mr. Chair, could we have a chance to respond?
Sure, go ahead.
Ralph Palumbo from Reveni, could you explain your construction schedule needs?
Yeah, well, aside from my needs, what does the current ordinance allow right now? Can anyone tell me what the current orders?
I don't believe that appears in the current ordinance. That condition stems from a condition that the town council placed upon the zone change for 310 Main Street. That was a special condition put on the 310 Main Street project by the town council. I don't think you'll find that in the solar ordinance anywhere.
Yeah, and they needed a zone change. When I ask you for a zone change, I think that's a horse of a different color. We will need to work on Saturdays. We constantly, all our projects, we have field personnel out there. But whether it's Monday or Saturday, we respect the same conditions of construction that the town puts on us. But we need to be out there on Saturday, and we need to be out there sometimes beyond 5 o'clock. So these projects have a determinative schedule that we need to keep. And it rains and does things like that, and we have winter conditions, and we have to make up time. So it's important that we not be restricted for that schedule.
Also, Mr. Chair, I would point out that you do have a noise ordinance in the town of Hopkinton, which is enforced. And I would say that if for some reason, which I would highly doubt, but if for some reason a project like this were to rise to the level of a noise ordinance violation, that is squarely before your, that's an enforcement issue, enforcement issue, which is, would be squarely before the town to monitor and enforce. I don't think there's really any need, and I haven't certainly heard any evidence of any need whatsoever to restrict construction hours. There's just no legal basis on the record here.
Well, if our solicitor is out there listening, if you have some guidance, this would be the time. Otherwise, I'm inclined to accept it as a tentative condition of our motion. If somebody wants to wrestle with us later on, there's a forum for that.
Mr. Chairman, Sean Clough, looking through the ordinance, I don't see any legal ability that the planning board has to place that type of restriction on the applicant and on this project in terms of the construction hours. With that said, if we are continuing to a further meeting and not having a formal vote tonight, I'd be happy to elaborate to a greater extent on that, and if necessary revise my comments. However, at this time, if you're asking for a recommendation, my recommendation would be that you do not have that authority.
So how about if I turn that around and say, I'm going to include it as a tentative condition of our motion, and you can work with a town planner and convince him that we don't have that authority?
Certainly.
There we go. Listen, the planning board has, I'm pretty sure this language is in the Development Plan Review Ordinance, we have a responsibility to the neighborhood. And work hours, and noise, and traffic, and all the other stuff that we've been putting up with for years, not criticizing this particular project, but folks in this neighborhood have been putting up with a lot. I see the planning board's role as looking out for their best interest. And I don't think it's unreasonable to suggest that a project of this magnitude has some limitations. To say that we can't operate without any restrictions at all, or the fact that we can't tolerate any restrictions on our ability to build a project, I think that's unreasonable. So enough said. I don't need to be on my soapbox. So all that put together, we're going to continue this. Before we do that, we're going to request an extension from the applicant. And again, it would be an extension, in adherence to our last thinking, to several days beyond our next meeting. And let's all hope that we can come to terms and issue our final motion at our next regular meeting. Am I missing anything?
Mr. Chair, Karen Browning, what is the date of your next meeting?
10/7.
So Karen, this is Ralph. What, how many extensions have we already granted, we're already sent to on this project?
So in terms of the actual number, I'd have to go back and check. I do know that this original application came before the board in November of 2019. We're getting close to a year now that we're in September. The planning board had seven months to make a decision. That would have been June of 2020. We have extended up to this point, so a few. At least since June, it would have been three months. And if we were to agree again tonight, it would have been an additional four months.
Okay, so Mr. Chairman, we're sent to it. And, but you're asking for beyond the next meeting. And so I need to understand that a little bit better, what you're asking for.
Yep, we talked about this last time around.
Jim Lamphier, Town Planner, I would suggest throwing out the date of the November meeting, just in case we need to, that would obviate the need to have a special meeting to do any work. And that would be November the 4th. So that would give us, if we needed it, two meetings to get work done. But hopefully, hopefully this will get done October 7.
I mean, I'll defer to my client on this, but I just have to say, as for the record, I can't imagine that this matter would have to go yet another two meetings.
Well, I'm certainly behind you there, Counselor. I would have been thinking that we would have been making a motion this evening, but that's not the way it came together.
Us as well, Mr. Chair.
So to the applicant specifically, the answer to the question was, you recall some of our last discussion, the extension really needs to be, at the minimum, beyond the next meeting, because something unforeseeable could come up, and we're not issuing default approvals here. So I would ask, I would be asking for something beyond the October meeting. Jim makes a very reasonable case for extending it to the November meeting, just in case. Boy, I sure hope it doesn't go that far. But I leave it up to you. Either one is okay with me?
Could I offer a compromise, Mr. Chair? If we were to agree to a date of 10/7 or whatever, a couple of days after that, I understand your concern. I don't think that's an issue. With the understanding that if we were to go beyond the October meeting, we would at least have the option of going on for a special meeting. It should be quick. But I think at this point, we should at least have our own meeting so that we can hash out these items and not, you know, be caught in what Hopkinton appears to be, which is a very busy time for you.
Understood. I appreciate your position. How about if we agree as a compromise on October 14th as the extension date?
I would defer to my client. Ralph, do you have a, will you accept that date?
So just so I understand, that is one week after the next meeting, right, Chairman?
That's correct. And my game plan here would be, if you're thinking the same way I am, is, you know, we look forward to getting this done on the 7th. You know, if things blow up, we're going to come back and ask for either another extension, or if the board members are in agreement, we'll try and wrestle a special meeting out.
We certainly appreciate that.
Yeah, so, and I do too, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. And I just want to say, you know, last time we gave the extension to extend, and I asked to be first on the agenda, because these are complex issues. And I thought we had some general agreement to that, but it turned out to be no. And I skipped the special, the opportunity for a special meeting that you had offered me. And I said, no, I don't want to do that for the board, for the council, because you guys are working hard and in good faith. And I wanted, you know, I wanted to keep it in motion. So I just want to say that. So we're working hard. We're with you. So I think it's a good compromise, the 14th on it, and we're willing to do that. And as you say, if things blow up, then we have a week to organize ourselves for a special meeting to make sure we get it done. So that makes sense to me.
Okay, so we have an agreement in concept on an extension to October 14th. I hear everybody shaking their heads up and down.
Carolyn says okay.
Okay.
Do I hear the applicants?
This is Ralph Palumbo. Yes, I agree on October 14th.
Thank you, Mr. Palumbo. All right, so the last order of business then would be to continue this to a date certain. If I could have a motion to that effect, please.
I'd like to make a motion that we continue this to a date certain of October 14th.
October 7th, actually, Ron, if I could.
Okay, October 17th with the potential to go to 14.
7, did you say 7?
7 to 14.
Just make a motion.
So October 7th.
Yeah, there we go, very good. Have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Deorio, yes.
Ron, aye.
Keith, yes.
Emily, yes. Carolyn, yes?
Ron, yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you all. Applicant, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate it.
I'm getting a thumbs up here. Okay, so for the next item on the agenda, once again, I have no association with this project. However, the applicant has been a client of mine in the past. Therefore, I'm going to follow the Ethics Commission guidance and stand down on this, going to be recusing. I'm going to forward issuing a notice of recusal to the clerk right now. And Ron, I would impose on you to take the helm one more time, please.
And I am accepting the refusal form. So would the applicant for this project, please press star 9 so I can recognize them?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Prowitz, if I could just interject here one second, this is Jim Lamphier, Town Planner. The clock on the wall is telling me that it's 20 minutes to 10 right now. And I just want to mention that this project coming up, next on the agenda, came to the board back in May of this year for a pre-application. Since that time, I believe the applicant has worked with abutting property owners to come up with a revised configuration for this site plan. And this project has never been peer reviewed yet. So in an effort to expedite this conversation tonight a little bit, I would suggest that what we do is entertain a brief presentation by the applicant's attorney to explain exactly what's been done, and then have the planning board entertain a motion to direct the applicant to have this project peer reviewed by Crossman Engineering for compliance with the PSES ordinance, and also to investigate stormwater drainage issues. I think, I don't really think we need to dwell on this project too much tonight in the absence of any comment from Crossman on this. I think it's probably more appropriate to bring it back to the board when we have all this information in tow. And then the abutting property owners can have something to reflect on and comment on as well. So I think we can wrap this whole thing up within 20 minutes tonight myself.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Looking over the paperwork that we have in our packet, it looks like the applicant and their attorneys have completed the checklist that they need to complete. They've submitted the paperwork that they need to submit. They've been in contact with the abutting neighbors. The story that I'm getting is they've come to agreements with all of them. So I would agree, excuse me, with our planner that we could move on. We could get the peer review and then continue this after that has been completed. Planning Board members, it's your pleasure.
This is Emily, Ron. I think what Jim was saying is that we would hear from the project proponent about all of that first. And I would like to hear that.
Oh, yes, I left that. Excuse me. Yes, we should hear their presentation, as long as they're going to be brief. But we shall continue. Thank you. Anybody else?
Agree, although it's 10 minutes of 10, not 20 minutes of.
Yeah, it's 9:50.
Carolyn, your opinion?
Let's go. Let's go for a quickie and move on.
Okay, understood. We're going for a quickie. Applicant, please present your side of the story.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Stephen Sirdit. And I echo the comments of your planner, although I was going to bust, I was going to make a comment about it being 10 minutes closer, but your board members stole my thunder on that joke. So very, very briefly, we were, our presentation does include primarily information from our engineer, Jason Gold, the VSS Group. And I will hold off on presenting him to the board to the following meeting. At the last meeting, there were a number of abutters that raised issues. We asked those abutters to provide information to your clerk if they would like to speak with us and what their concerns were, and that we would like to meet with them individually and address those concerns. We were able, we had only one party who, who corresponded with us. That would be Mr. Mark Cotor and his wife. We have, we had the opportunity to meet at the site with him a couple of times. We had a number of correspondents, and we have an agreement that we are actually in the process of memorializing in writing, and we will present that to your planning department between now and the next meeting. It is our goal here to put a relatively small project. We have actually been able to shrink the project from the original application based on efficiencies that have been, we've been able to incorporate in the technology itself. So it is certainly our goal to minimize the, the potential impact of this project. We believe that it is not, does not impact the surrounding properties, as our witnesses will go into great detail on when we do our full explanation. We believe, we have complied with all aspects of your farm viability ordinance. And ultimately, we, in seeing your agenda here tonight and understanding the complex nature of a number of these projects, we're hopeful that we would get sent to peer review and then get the opportunity to come back in front of you, which we are hopeful for here tonight. And if there are any specific questions that the board members have between, we'd be happy to hear those so that we could properly address them.
Thank you, Mr. Sirdit. Planning board members, questions, comments?
This is Carolyn. Not to be caught up tonight, but I would like to have our town solicitor give the thumbs up to the notification we have in our packet from the Ashaway Volunteer Fire Association. Since Mr. Spazato is the chief, we need some confirmation that it was appropriate to have the first assistant chief provide that documentation to us. And the second comment that I would make is, like the last time, we heard a farm viability presentation, we'd like confirmation that this land does in fact qualify for what they're proposing. Thank you.
Okay, understood, Carolyn. My question to Jim Lamphier. They have completed all the paperwork, or maybe this should go to Mr. Sirdit? The farm viability has been qualified?
Jim Lamphier Town Planner, we, I, I, I think we can safely say that this qualifies as a farm. We have a zoning certificate from the zoning official. We have all of the documentation required for a farm. We have Schedule F, IRS Schedule Fs for the years 2018 and 2019. We have a farm tax number from the state of Rhode Island, tax exempt from paying taxes. So I, I think we can put that issue to rest right now, that this is a legitimate farm qualifying under our ordinance.
Okay, thank you, Jim. So that being said.
You're welcome.
That being said, can we move on to the request for a peer review and put this to bed to a next meeting?
I just had one additional, very quick question, Ron, and that was, the abutters that have been engaged with, is that the abutter to the immediate north of the project? The one that is the closest in proximity?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, Stephen Sirdit.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I, direction is relative, but it is Mr. Mark Cotor, who I believe to be the most adjacent abutter, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Thank you for your question, Emily.
Mr. Chairman, if I may interject, I believe Carolyn had a question directed to me. If she can repeat that question, I might not be able to answer it this evening, but I can get an answer for her as quickly as possible.
Certainly.
Hi, Sean, it's Carolyn. Our packets from the year include a letter dated July 21st, 2020, from the Ashaway Volunteer Fire Association. And it gives the thumbs up that there are basically no issues with the access driveway on an annual basis. First, that letter, that statement does cover the approval from the fire marshal for the entire project. But my immediate concern is that there could be a potential conflict of interest that would void that communication. So what we'd like to know is if in fact this letter qualifies for what it is that's required here.
Understood. And I'll take a look at the letter and get an answer back to you and the board as quickly as possible.
Mr. Chairman, Stephen Sirdit, if we could just be included in that communication so that if there is additional information that's requested, that we could address it immediately?
Understood. Sean, do you agree with that?
To the extent that our communication falls under attorney-client privilege, obviously, we would, we're, we simply won't be able to communicate. And in, in any, to any extent that we can and the board so chooses to include that information to the applicant, then I think that will be appropriate and fine from the solicitor's office.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I think at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to postpone this to the next meeting so that we can get some more facts and figures and get all ducks on the road, and then be able to move on.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Jim Lamphier Town Planner, did we, did the board decide on a peer review yet?
We'll also need an extension. And also Sharon would like to make a comment.
I, I got my answer. I just wanted to make sure they had the right tax returns, the right years, and that was confirmed, so I'm okay.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, in terms of an extension, seven months from May would take us to December, December 6th or somewhere around there. So the December meeting is December 2nd. So I don't know how fast you can turn around a peer review, but if you want to grant an extension, that's fine.
When I was referring to an extension, I mean because it's 9:59.
Oh, that, okay. I don't worry about that. I'm good to go to midnight. I just want to get the work done.
But we will, we will need a motion for an extension because it is now 10:00 p.m.
Can I have a motion to extend, please? Jim Lamphier Town Planner.
We have the motion, please.
Can we go to 10:30? Because we do have another item on the agenda that, that we really should not give short shrift to Captain Carolyn's initiative here. So can we go to 10:30, extension?
Planning board members, could we have a mission, motion to go to 10:30?
Ma, this is Carolyn. My husband said no.
Thank you, Jeff.
Okay, 10:15 then.
You guys are perfect. I don't have any objection if we need to move this on to the next meeting.
Well, we better do it now, Carolyn, because next meeting, you don't want to know what the next meeting goes.
Keep in mind that a lot, not only do we have a packed meeting for October 7th, but we're carrying over things from tonight and packing it more. So I mean, I mean, let's, let's get this worked on.
All right, so Carolyn says, I, I would be on board with 15 minutes. I don't think we're going to need more than that.
Okay.
Unless the board members can tell us.
I'll make a motion to extend to 10:15. This is Emily.
Thank you. Was that you, Keith, who seconded?
Okay, we have a motion and we have a second. Go ahead. Go ahead.
Keith, was it you who seconded?
No, it was Keith. Yeah, yeah. Yes.
Well.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Planning board members. Prowitz, yes.
Carolyn, yes.
Emily, yes.
13 minutes.
Keith, are you still there?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we are extending for 15 minutes. Back to Centrica. This is being postponed until the next meeting? Are we all in agreement with that? And by all, I mean the applicant's attorneys and our planner.
Mr. Chairman, Stephen Sirdit, we're in agreement. We are just requesting that the matter be sent to peer review and that a motion be taken, undertaken to that effect.
Understood. A request for peer review. All right, do we have a motion to ex, to extend and to request a peer review?
This is Carolyn. I'll make a motion to extend to the next meeting and direct the planner, excuse me, the applicant, to request, get the, get the peer review from Crosman Engineering.
Thank you. We have a motion.
Second.
I'll second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Prowitz, yes.
Carolyn, yes. Emily, yes.
Okay, it passes.
This is Carolyn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Thank you, Steve. Okay, at this point?
Ron?
Go ahead, Carolyn.
Jim had also made a recommendation that we direct the applicant to submit a plan for stormwater management, and I think our motion should include that. I apologize.
Okay, well, let's do that then.
Yeah, this is Jim Lamphier Town Planner. I don't think, Carolyn, that you need to amend the motion because when Crosman peer reviews this, they're going to be looking at it from a stormwater perspective. So that, that'll all be done in the course of that.
Okay, thank you.
Everybody squared away on that agenda item?
Okay, thank you. Yes, at this time, I'd like to return the chair to Mr. Deorio.
Ron, thank you very much. Good job. Next item on the agenda, and, and I extend my apologies to the public. This is an advisory opinion to the town council. This item was actually deleted from our agenda. This applicant is not appearing before us this evening. If anybody has been waiting for this, I, again, I apologize. I, I should have gotten to it at the beginning of the meeting, and I simply got wrapped up. So that item is not presently before us. Leading us to the last item on the agenda, which is to discuss possible scheduling of an agenda item at either a future special planning board meeting or a future regular planning board meeting regarding discussion of reforestation issues as requested by planning board member Carolyn White. So Carolyn, before you launch on this, I just want to make sure that we're all clear. This is a discussion about scheduling the agenda item. So we're not delving, we're not delving into the substance of the proposal or your objectives. I'm just looking to, one of the reasons that we put this on the agenda was to just garner the planning board's thoughts on whether this kind of thing should be the subject of further discussion. So at that, Carolyn, why don't you open up the discussion, and we'll go to the planning board members?
Well, hopefully, the planning board members have had a time to review the draft that I submitted. And I think at the last meeting, I explained that we need some consistency with decisions that we're making. This one points to forestation. I also think we need consistency in addition, decommissioning approaches, because they, they, it seems to flounder a bit. But with a specific focus on this, I think what we've heard from our community is that there is a value to our forest. And I think we need to decide how much value we have, rather than leave it up to landscape, licensed landscape architects, et cetera. We have a lot of valuable forests here, and this approach is just a very broad brush at a mechanism that we might be able to employ to put a value on our trees and preserve our forest. In addition, it also provides assets in the form of money to the town to administer the maintenance of these forestation projects that we're talking about with every solar discussion. This isn't limited to the work that is done in the solar arena. This is something that would be applicable to commercial projects and whatnot. So with, with that said, I am just going to pass the torch to the rest of the board, and I, I'm interested in your comments, and I respect whatever it is that you have to offer on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. I'll cert, no problem leading off here. I'm in full support of any proposal that a fellow planning board member wants to bring forth for further discussion. I'm not saying that I'm necessarily on board with the item itself, but certainly the opportunity to discuss and explore, I think, should always be available to planning board members. That's really what we should be doing. So I would be an advocate for having this as an agenda item. Now, whether we do it as a special meeting or a regular meeting, I think that's something that we need to rely on, on the planner to help us with, because, you know, he's the one that's really, I mean, the rubber meets the road in his office. So I would just look for his guidance. So anyway, that's my two cents worth.
I would like to add my two cents worth. I, I agree with Al. All the different opinions that we get are always good. The more laid out in black and white what people are being required to do, that's always good. I think this should go into another meeting, and as Al said, we'll leave it up to, to our planner. Perhaps a meeting when there's light response on everything else, we could put this in as an agenda item, or we could hash it right out and get to the bottom of it. Thank you.
This is Emily. I agree. It's a great topic to add to a future agenda.
I, I agree that the, the part that keeps sticking in me is that we just don't talk about the end life of these projects enough. You know, we talk about decommissioning and then what, but we never talk about these projects renewing themselves. And, and where does the town go? If there's a decommissioning, we've approved its temporary power, and then it goes away, and, and how are we supposed to replace that once that solar is, and so for it goes away, and, and how are we supposed to replace that once that solar, and so, for me, it's, it's, it's not just reforestation, but what do we do at the end of these projects? Is that, I guess that's, what, we did, Keith mentioned, and we have this money, and then, then what, what happens after that? Do we seek alternate power, do we go back to what it was 30 years previously before the solar panel was in place? It, it, it's just not a single topic, I think, reforestation is part of it, but the whole, what happens after these projects go away is, is, is the larger discussion for me.
Interesting.
Steph, go ahead.
Oh, yeah, I, I think this is an excellent idea to start a conversation about the value of our forest areas, and about trying to keep our contiguous forest areas together, and not break them up environmentally for the animals, but also, there is, this is a study, and I'm sorry I don't have it in, in front of me right now, but that talked about the value of forested areas for, we, not for renewable energy, but for, but for keeping us all healthy, you know, they serve a purpose as well.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
So, if I could make a recommendation, I, and I would need, uh, the concurrence of both Jim and Carolyn on this, so, I'd like to suggest that this be added to the regular planning board meeting agenda, with the caveat that there's a really good chance we're not going to get to it, but, in the event, in the event that there's, uh, like tonight, we had an applicant pull out, there, there's an opportunity that a hole might develop, and if it's on the agenda, we have the latitude to enter discussion. If we don't put it on the agenda, well, then even if there's an opportunity, we're not going to be allowed to talk about it. So, if Carolyn is okay with putting it on the agenda with the understanding that it might not get heard this, this next meeting, but maybe it's the meeting after, or whatever, that, that would be my suggestion for how we tackle this as promptly as we can.
We have a member of the public who'd like to comment on this, would you like to entertain it?
Maybe if I could just hear Jim's thought on how he wants to handle it, then we'll go to that person. Yeah, Jim Lamphier Town Planner, um, I'm, I'm fine with going along with Al's suggestion, uh, I think it's a, it's a good one, we'll, we'll certainly give it a try, um, I think, you know, truthfully, I think something like this probably deserves a, 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 a special meeting by itself, um, the draft, the draft that Carolyn put forth is, uh, significant enough to, uh, and, and the other issues that I hear, the, um, uh, various people bringing up here, larger issues that probably need to be, you know, thrashed out, I think in a, you know, ideally, I think it would call for a special meeting, but I, I think one way to achieve, to achieve what Al is suggesting here, now throw this idea out, is that, ask the, I, I'd like to ask the planning board members to do a little bit of homework in advance, okay? Look at, look at the draft that Carolyn prepared, read it thoroughly, and write, just write a little, uh, you know, your own little comments and report on it, and if I had one of those each, from each of you individually, I could compile them and put them in, in your next packet for the next meeting, and, um, so that you all can read what each one of you have to say about this particular topic, and then maybe if we can find 10 or 15 minutes on a future agenda to, to deal with this, maybe we could, maybe, uh, deal with it a little bit more efficiently that way, so, I, I guess that's my comment. I like that thought, why don't we plan on doing that, uh, in advance of the next meeting? And then, just to piggyback on top of Jim's concern, Carolyn, I, I don't want you to think that this is just going to go on forever, why don't we keep it on the agenda, we see if it, we, we let it roll for a month or two, if we don't get to it in two months, then let's talk about setting a special meeting just to deal with this topic, and as Keith mentioned, maybe there are some larger issues that we can thrash around as well, does that sound equitable?
That is equitable, and, uh, like you just noted, Keith, the comments that you had, even though they weren't specifically applicable to this draft that you're looking at, those comments are things that I would like to hear, um, when they're available at next meeting. Thank you guys.
Okay, no, we thank you, I appreciate you taking the initiative, we got someone in the audience that wants to be heard.
No longer.
I guess they don't want to be heard, they get bored. Okay, so, uh, moving through the rest of the agenda.
Nope, nevermind.
Whoops.
They raised their hand.
Okay.
Please state your name for the record.
Hi, it's Eric Bivler, I noticed you have public forum, I know it's late, and you have public forum on the agenda, I was waiting for that actually.
Okay, we haven't gotten to that part yet.
Okay, uh, I can just wait, I just wanted to make some quick comments at the end, okay?
Okay.
Okay, rightfully through the rest of the agenda then, solicitors report.
Uh, there is none at this time.
Thank you, planners report.
There is none.
Correspondents and updates.
There is none.
Public forum, Eric still there?
Yes, one moment. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you very much, so, really quickly, um, one item I wanted to raise is that I, I, I really applaud the fact that the town planner and the planning board are starting to make, uh, most of these documents that relate to your deliberations available online, but, um, it's most and not all of them, and we, it's really helpful to have these documents to be able to, uh, follow along and prepare for the meeting and, and, uh, have any meaningful input, so, you know, for example, last month, you received some memoranda that were not posted to the website, I requested them on a public records request, but it's kind of late for that now, it relates to the August meeting. Carolyn's draft, whatever it is, on this last agenda item was not posted to the, uh, website, so I would just ask you to please try to, you know, post any, any materials that are relevant to your deliberations on the website, so that members of the public can have meaningful input, so that's the first thing. Second thing, I just want to say, this is not a criticism of the planning board in any way, I am concerned by how packed your agenda, your agendas have become, uh, because I think the planning board should give whatever attention is required, you know, to every single one of these, uh, projects, and I don't feel that the planning board should feel rushed in terms of, you know, you're sort of in a fiduciary capacity, and, uh, shouldn't feel rushed in being able to do the job that you think that you need to do. So, um, I'm not sure what's to be done about that, but, um, I get a little concerned, um, and I think the public also should always have a chance to have a little bit of input on these things. Um, and then, finally, um, I was trying to raise my hand last August, in the August meeting, when conversation ensued about the, uh, the, I know this is, I know this issue's moot, but this is going to be important for future projects, conversation was had about the, uh, the decommissioning reserve for a project, but the public forum period had ended, we have remote hearings, there's no way to stand up in the audience and object and, uh, or make a subjection, a suggestion, and if you're not recognized, then you don't have any input on that project. In this instance, I had been hoping today to be able to ask the town engineers, town engineer Steve Cabral a question, he's no longer on the call apparently, but, um, what I heard tonight was, in setting the decommissioning reserve for, uh, a previous project, I heard universal dissatisfaction on the part of every single planning board member, I heard every single planning board member, uh, express their reluctance to approve the amount of the reserve, and to feel and express their, their frustration that they essentially felt that they'd been instructed by the town solicitor that that was their only option, and in fact, you know, the, this, this is a form of risk analysis, this decommissioning reserve estimate, and no one knows the, what, what a solar panel is going to be worth 30 years from now, and whether or not it can be repurposed, or whether it's just junk, um, you received documents from the applicant's expert that said that the cost of recycling every single solar panel was $44.12, and then you received an estimate that if panels could be resold, they would be worth $11 in an estimate, but that's only a single assumption, there was, there was an assumption made that two-thirds of the panels could be sold, that they could be sold for 11 bucks each, and it's not so much the $11 that the salvage value would create, it's the avoidance of having to pay $44 expense to recycle any panel that is obsolete and no one wants in 25 or 30 years. So that's a massive swing, the recycling expense on that project would have been well over a million dollars, it's about a million two, and your reserve is less than $400,000, I believe, on that one. These are, these are, these are big numbers, and it's important to get this right, I believe if, um, I'd been able to get through in the meeting last August, and if I had asked our town engineer, Stephen Cabral, if he could guarantee that any of these panels could be sold, if he referenced this, uh, report that said there are going to be 78 million metric tons of solar panel waste in 2050, I, if I asked him, Mr. Cabral, is there a chance, is there any possibility that none of these could be repurposed? Can you guarantee that won't be true? And if I had asked him, can you tell this planning board, excuse me, that the, that the, that the, uh, probability of there having any value is greater than the probability of there having zero value, I don't think he could answer that question, it's entirely speculative. If we had gotten those questions on the record, that, uh, he just doesn't know, and it's equally probable that they would have no value, that would have been the expert testimony that the planning board needed to be able to, you know, be prudent, so, uh, going forward, I think it's really important to understand that when you're doing a risk analysis, you can't just take one set of assumptions and hope that they're true, you need to look at sort of a best case, worst case, you know, whatever seem, might seem reasonable, but you have to admit that the town has to insure itself against these risks, and not allow the developer to transfer those risks to our town. We didn't ask that question of the town engineer, we didn't get the town engineer to be explicit that there was no way to guarantee that any of them could avoid being recycling, and that it's quite entirely possible that 100% of them needed to be recycled. If we had had our experts say that on the record, then the planning board would have had the expert testimony it needed to require 100% recycling, and as a final note, there are towns in Rhode Island right now that do require, in their ordinances, an assumption that the panels need to be recycled, 100%, you know, we don't do that explicitly, but there's no expert on God's green earth that can tell you that he knows that that's not true, and, uh, we just need to get that, our expert to, to tell the planning board that, please, in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you everyone.
We have one more member, uh, of the public who'd like to comment. Please state your name for the record, 8222.
Hi, this is Joe Morel, and I appreciate your extra time, you're well past the 10 o'clock and the extension of 10:15, um, I'm not going to go through and rehash a lot of things that we've heard in the past, but I just wanted to make a comment, uh, on something while, uh, the attorney was on for 40, Maxon Hill, because I also read the, the letter from the Ashaway Volunteer Fire Department, and the Carol stated, I believe that there should be another opinion from outside of our town to review assessing the driveway from the fire department officials, not an expert witness from the developer or the attorney, and I'm glad that our attorney is checking into it, um, but I would strongly encourage us to get a second opinion on this, how can we not say it's a conflict of interest? And thank you for your time, and please make sure you put yourself in for a half hour of overtime, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you Joe. Okay, does that do it?
Mm-hmm.
Excellent, uh, that's the last item on the agenda, the date of the next meeting is October 7th, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'd like to make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Excellent, any further discussion, all in favor? DiOrio, yes?
Yes, Carolyn, yes.
Keith, yes.
Emily, yes.
My husband said yes.
Very good, listen, I thank you all for your time, and especially putting in the extra effort, I'll make sure that you document the, uh, need for some extra pay, very good, thank you very much.